Okay, welcome everyone. Good afternoon. I will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Tuesday, July 23, 2019. And would our clerk please call the roll?
Absolutely.
Good afternoon, roll call. Trustee Calvert. Trustee Cottrell. President Simon-Holland.
Here.
Trustee Kelly.
Here.
Trustee Minneto.
Here.
Vice President Raymond is on vacation. And Clerk Taylor, I am here. The student is also on vacation. But Madam President, we have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would Ms. Gina Curtis lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So you never know when you're going to get called on, huh? Okay, our next item is public comment. And we actually don't have our person here yet to...
Thank you.
Thank you. She knows how to be a relief... Yes, a relief hitter. That's right. Okay.
John Appolito. Sure, it was just on top.
Okay.
That we do, okay. Health insurance. Carol Hines.
Ms. Hines, welcome.
Thanks. I have a couple of things I'm going to bring up. This one was not on your agenda, but it's something that has concerned me since I read several articles in the newspaper about the school district, the school board approving Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield as what the purveyor, whatever you want to call it, for the employees' medical insurance next year. However, Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield has been in negotiations, had been in negotiations with Renown, and in February they were like, "We have no more use for you guys." And as of July 31st, the people who have Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield through other employees, employers, or whatever can no longer use Renown. So at what point did you, in June, not know that Anthem Blue Cross was no longer negotiating to service Renown? Or did this board have a completely different agreement with Anthem that our employees, all seven of us, would be allowed to go to Renown and that the agreement, or disagreement, non-agreement that they have with Renown doesn't impact us? So first, can you tell me, are we impacted?
We don't do conversation during your public comment time. I'll respond when you're finished, Ms. Hines.
Okay. I would be very interested in knowing that because the last time things got switched around, it was chaos. I lost my doctor of 30 years because I could no longer see him because I didn't use Renown. I used St. Mary's. And then we all had now used Renown, not St. Mary's. Those two don't talk. If you have test results in St. Mary's, Renown doesn't care. They don't want them. These people are incompetent. So now if we have to go to St. Mary's, anything we've had done at Renown, hey, they don't talk. It's not a very amiable situation. The other thing, two other things very quickly, but I would really like to know about that, is I have a comment on, I saw that you were going to be discussing the superintendent. I was with the district for a long time. It was 13 years ago, August 1st, that I retired from my classroom at Swole. Please find someone from within. The last few that have come in from outside have been abysmal, and I think all past and present employees deserve better than that. And on item 211, I wondered if this was the item where you have to go in and reveal your innermost medical secrets to this organization so they can tell you how you can be more healthy or whatever. I don't know if that's what it is. If it is, quit invading my privacy and get rid of this.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Just so everyone is clear, the school district is continuing to communicate with Anthem. There was a meeting with Anthem just, I think, a week before last. So employees and retirees who are part of our healthcare system will be informed and will receive communications and updates about that. So there's nothing new to add, at least from the board's perspective. We had a request for proposal process that was open and was quite widely discussed. And I know our HR folks are continuing to talk with Anthem. And then with regard to item 211, this is really, as I understand it, a second opinion opportunity. And so it's an optional thing that is provided if employees want to have a second opinion. This group will provide it at the employee's request or at the insured person's request. Okay, next up for public comment.
I'm Margaret Martini.
Welcome, Ms. Martini.
Margaret Martini. I support Protect Nevada Children. You can find us on Facebook at Protect Nevada Children. There has been a lot of talk about what Google and Facebook learned about us as adults as we use their free products. The information these companies know about adults pales in comparison to what free ed tech vendors know about our children. Without parental consent, ed tech vendors collect, store, and share data and create secret profiles on our children. We parents will never see the information or profile some of these vendors save forever on our kids. Experts on the left and right have written about how these secret profiles will affect the future of our children, at minimum for college admissions, military recruiting, and job placement. For years, Edmodo has been one of the most widely-used free ed tech products in Washoe County schools. About two and a half years ago, Edmodo had a huge data breach where the personal information of students was placed for sale on the dark web. About one and a half years ago, the Chinese bought Edmodo. Experts believe it was for the secret profiles of U.S. schoolchildren. Immediately after both of these incidents, Protect Nevada Children begged this board to tell parents what happened and let them decide if they wanted their children logging in and sharing data with free ed tech vendors or not. And you all still refuse. About 10 months ago, the FBI issued a public service announcement warning parents about the dangers of students using ed tech products. This board has jeopardized the future of all students in the state of Nevada. Here's how. During this legislative session, one of Protect Nevada Children's bills was SB 403. The bill would have required Nevada's school districts to educate parents on the dangers of children sharing personal data and schoolwork with free ed tech vendors like Edmodo, and would have allowed parents to opt out their children. Almost everyone in the state supported our bill, including Clark County and the State Teachers Union. The only opposition to SB 403 came from, guess who? Washoe County School District. This board was able to gut our bill so that the district, not parents, would decide when secret profiles would start being created on children. For years, Protect Nevada Children has been begging this board to educate parents and allow them, parents, not the district, to decide when their children start sharing personal data and schoolwork with free ed tech vendors. You can find us on Facebook at Protect Nevada Children. And please add this comment for the record.
Thank you, Ms. Martini.
Thank you.
Todd Taxpayer Bailey. Mr. Bailey, welcome.
Thank you, Madam President. Public trust is the lubricant of good government in the United States and Nevada. Until recently, the Washoe County School District Administration and the school board have enjoyed extensive public trust. Madam President, your tenure at the county commission was exemplary. As you know, I've been to many of your meetings, and it's still a great organization today. When you left, you had a trained, prepared, and able and obvious successor, and it's a testament to your wise management. Superintendent Tracy Davis, who led by law the district's academic success through her administration and the previous one, the superintendent the board hired before Ms. Davis was only a bookkeeper. He had no credentials or experience that was recognized by the Nevada Department of Education under NRS 391. Ms. Davis has been doing this for a long time. These are the two people who have enjoyed deep public trust to properly run Washoe County School District along with the rest of the trustees and administration. And now they're fighting an illegal battle. Teachers and employees, parents, students, other elected officials, and taxpayers all have a crisis of trust with Washoe County School District, the board, and administration. This can only be resolved with publicly factual information that is transparent according to your own values. We will be directing your attention to this information. There is a crisis of trust, and it must be resolved and rebuilt. And Nevada Accountability is here to help.
Thank you, sir. And John Appolito. Mr. Appolito, I'm sorry to see you're injured. Did you have surgery or...?
Bicycle.
Oh, no.
Surgery, yes.
Ow, oh.
Oh, it's not as bad as it looks. My name is John Appolito. I'm the president of Protect Nevada Children. I'm a former K-12 teacher, and I have two kids left in the district. Since I was here last, there's been three new publications that I wanted to bring to your attention, and I brought copies for you folks. The first one is the Wall Street Journal article that was published about 10 days ago. Schools, and the author is Betsy Morris. She's a senior writer at the Wall Street Journal. She's stationed in San Francisco. "Schools Wrestle With Privacy Of Digital Data Collected On Students." The online data collected on students is a complicated new frontier in the privacy battle. And the beginning of her article talks about just what I've been talking to you guys about for almost three years. The data these third-party vendors collect on our kids is very important to both colleges and workforce. In addition, she doesn't mention, but military is also interested in this data. And she gives several examples of how this is keeping kids out of college. So you have to read this article. One of the places in the article she talks about, quote, "Changes in 2011 to FERPA Act mean parental consent is no longer required for school officials to share personal information with third-party vendors," end quote. We all know that. You guys took this one step further, and you named some of the third-party vendors as school officials, which means they can share our children's data with others. They don't have to tell you what they're sharing by law. Maybe they told you they would, maybe they didn't. I have no idea. But they can if they want. The second article, I know Microsoft 365 is the big one that we use in this district. The second article just got published seven days ago, titled "German Schools Ban Microsoft Office 365 Amid Privacy Concerns." And again, no matter what this article says, I know this board is not going to get away from Microsoft 365 because it's too late. You've already done it, and whatever's on there, there's a big privacy concern with Microsoft 365. They've been flying under the radar because Google's been taking all the heat, but not anymore. And again, I don't think you guys are going to do anything if history proves anything. And the third article is about another one of these free vendors that filed bankruptcy, and now all the student data that they had, they can do pretty much whatever they want with it because of their privacy policy. Heck, as Ms. Martini just said, you wouldn't even tell parents when the Chinese bought Edmodo. Remember, Edmodo has much more data about these children than Facebook has about us adults because Edmodo has a social media platform and a place for kids to share schoolwork. All we're asking, just like we did in SB 403, which you guys were the only ones in the state who objected to, educate parents, let them decide if they want their children using these. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito.
You're welcome.
And Connie Silveira. Ms. Silveira, welcome.
Thank you. I spoke before about the times of your meetings, so thank you for trying to adjust it to a better time to accommodate people. One more comment on that, though. People that work during the day till 5:00, your parents and employees can't come to these meetings. And if they work at night, they still can't come to your meetings because they're probably about 3:00 o'clock. So just as a suggestion for the future, if you were to alternate and have 9:00 a.m. and the next month have maybe a 6:00 p.m., and that way you'd be completely transparent to all the parents, to all the public, and I think a lot of us would feel a little better about that. And just quick comments, I hope that you look at the new superintendent as somebody local. We'd like to, as a public, we'd like to see somebody who has roots here in our area. I think that would be, you know, I hope you consider that with a little more weight than someone from outside the area that's going to use us as a stepping stone to something else. And as far as, I know today you're going to talk about Dr. McNeil's pay, and I don't know what her pay is currently. I didn't have time to look it up. But I'm sure she's kind of auditioning for the job. And, you know, you have a lot of employees that qualify for food stamps. They are so poorly paid at the lower levels. So I hope that you won't consider, you know, raises now for someone in an acting position. I hope you save any of those dollars for your employees that, like I say, actually do qualify for food stamps. And that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silveira.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, we will move on to action to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Thank you, Dr. Taylor, second, by trustee Cottrell. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda items. Do we have any requests to speak on the consent agenda, Lisa? Okay.
Todd Taxpayer Bailey, please.
On which item?
This would be for 2.02 and 2.03.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Madam President, I would urgently ask the board to delay payment to the National Association of School Boards in the amount of $23,073.91, item 2.02, and the payment to the National School Board Association in the amount of $16,218.75, item 2.03, until further review. Why two organizations that are kind of doing the same thing? It seems like a lot of money for duplication. What are the real benefits to the school board belonging to these two organizations? So I guess I'd like to see some information about that. You can hand me the brochure from the last convention you all went to, and that should be enough. Anytime there is a dramatic change in leadership in any organization of this size, one of the first things to investigate and look at is travel expenses. At this time, Nevada Accountability would like to submit a public information request, number 190723-001, to obtain the accounting records for all travel expenses made by Washoe County School District since January 2017. After review of the expenses that have been paid out, we may ask to see the supporting documentation. If Washoe County School District paid for someone to spend money on the in-room minibar somewhere, we want to know about it.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. No, we don't provide for that. And yes, you can file a written public records request. And actually, the school district cut our travel budget by more than 50% over the last couple of years, and many of our teacher training events are actually grant-funded. And we don't travel much in this district. So I think you'll be surprised to see the travel is quite minimal for 8,000 employees. I think we saw it was about $50,000 district-wide for 8,000 employees. And just to mention the two items, the dues to the Nevada Association of School Boards and to the National School Boards Association Council of Urban Boards of Education, I'll talk about the Nevada Association of School Boards first. We have a role as the second-largest county in Nevada in participating with other school boards to ensure that school board members are trained and are qualified and are getting current information about issues such as legal, open-meeting law, human resources, and labor relations laws that change nationwide. We get training on school safety and security that are of national standards. And the legislature does mandate that school board members in Nevada receive a number of hours of training in their term. And the Nevada Association of School Boards provides that training. So we not only help other school board members throughout the state to do a better job of leading their districts, but we also receive training from folks from throughout the country on some of these very, very important topics, such as school safety and human resources law. And then with regard to the National School Boards Association, the Council of Urban Boards of Education has been a tremendous resource to the district in providing us current information about things that are happening nationwide that do affect us or have the potential to affect us. So those are, again, very valuable opportunities for us. And we do, we have in the past rotated who goes to the National School Boards Association Conference, and we get extremely valuable information. I know some of our newer trustees went this past year, and Ms. Minneto and Ms. Calvert, I think, got a lot out of it. So it's a great training opportunity, and we want to make sure that we're providing our best for the district. So any other public comment on those two items?
That's all I have.
Or on any other on consent agenda?
No.
Okay. Do we have any questions on the consent agenda from any board members? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Sorry? Oh, thank you. Thank you. Okay, reminder, sorry, moving too fast. We do need to pull item 2.15. We had an inadvertent error in, we should have had renewal of some members of that chair committee, and we did not have that on the agenda. So to be good stewards of our open-meeting law, we will bring that back for action in August. So we will be pulling 2.15. So we would be, actually, we need action to pull item 2.15. So let's do that first.
Madam President, excuse me, I move that we remove agenda item 2.15 until it is appropriately noted, the terms and status of each committee member.
Thank you. Second by trustee Cottrell. Further discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. And now we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Sumut.
Thank you. Trustee Kelly. Second by trustee Minneto. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, item 3.1 is public hearing regarding Board Resolution 19006, resolution of intent proposing the issuance of up to $100 million in general obligation bonds additionally secured with pledged revenues approved by the Board of Trustees on May 28, 2019. Our CFO, Mr. Mathers, is here to walk us through that item. Thank you, Mr. Mathers.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. On May 28th, this board approved a resolution of intent to issue $100 million of general obligation bonds that pledged the WC-1 sales tax. This would be the third series of what we call WC-1 bonds issued that do pledge the sales tax that was approved by voters in November of 2016. So your approval of that resolution of intent on May 28th set forth a series of public notices in the newspaper and a 90-day petition period for residents to consider these bonds. And as part of that public noticing process, therefore, you are required to open this public hearing, hear testimony, and then close the public hearing. And that's all the action that you're required and can make today. So with that, I'll throw it back to you.
Okay. Well, we will open the public hearing. Do we have any...
I have not received any comments.
Okay. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this time? Okay, hearing none. We will close the public hearing. That's all we need to do. We did have an extensive presentation previously about how those bonds would be used, so I don't want anyone to get the idea that we're taking that lightly. It's a very, very important step and certainly furthers both our remodel and rehabilitation and repair program for our schools as well as construction of new schools. Okay, item 3.2 is opening of proposals to purchase and possible action to sell 29.446 acres of district-owned property located on Vista Boulevard for a minimum amount of $6 million pursuant to Washoe County School District Board Resolution 19007, as adopted on June 25, 2019. Welcome, Mr. Foster.
Great, thank you very much. For the record, I'm Mike Foster with Capital Projects. So for this Vista 29-acre property, we published and posted that as indicated on the resolution and sent out the call for bids. We received no written bids for this property.
Wow.
So in reviewing the NRS, since we have no written bids, you can go directly to the oral bids portion of the show type of thing. And then any oral bid must match or exceed the appraised value and all the terms listed in the resolution. And then there are steps beyond that, too. If we don't, if you don't receive a bid that matches the resolution, we can go to a second meeting and even a third meeting if need be.
Okay.
So you can do the oral bids at this point.
Okay. I would open it up to anyone wishing to make an oral bid on the property on Vista Boulevard that we have referenced for a minimum of $6 million and other considerations that were included in our resolution. Is there anyone wishing to bid on that property at this time? Going once, going twice. Okay. Well, we have no bids, so we will have to reconsider that at a future time.
Correct. And yes, what we'll have to do is amend and then renotice and republish that resolution, and we'll hold another public meeting, not less than three weeks later. So we'll do this again and see what happens there. If you don't get a bid that matches the resolution at that meeting, you do that one more time. And then at that, I guess it would be the third meeting, you can accept a bid that is less than the fair market appraised value.
Okay.
But we've got to go through one more iteration of this.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Foster.
Thank you.
We will look forward to that coming back to us. And then we will now move on to item 3.3. And 3.3 is opening of proposals to purchase and possible action to sell 10 acres of district-owned property located on Wilbur May Parkway for a minimum of $2.6 million pursuant to Washoe County School District Board Resolution 19-008.
Okay, again, Mike.
Mr. Foster.
Yes, thank you. Mike Foster, for the record, we have received three bids for this property. Just to let you know, we did notice and publish this as advertised in the resolution. So if you want, I can pass the three bids to Lisa and pass them around to you like we did kind of last time.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Okay, so everyone can see these are sealed bids. They're still sealed, and I'll be opening them now. And my trusted legal counselor will be reviewing to make sure that we're, we have everything we need in those bids. And I will, that is the Archcrest Mark Kruger Pension of Rider and V Management LLC is that one. And then this one is also Archcrest, and this is from Insight Educational Facilities Services. Okay? And I'll let you look at that. This is our version of the courthouse steps, so takes us a moment to follow the procedure. And this one is from Silverado Homes Nevada, Inc. Okay, you want to give me the go-ahead when you've had a moment to look? So the minimum bid is $2.6 million. So the minimum bid is 2.6 Million. Okay. So the bid from Insight, let's see, is $2,700,000. The bid from Ryder NV Management LLC is for a purchase price of $2,750,000. And the bid from Silverado Homes is for $2,910,000. And what we do now is, so we have a bid that is the highest, $2,910,000, but we do offer the opportunity for oral bids for a higher amount. So I would, at this time, offer the opportunity for anyone in the office, if you are in the, in the room, if you would like to provide a purchase price, again, meeting all of the other requirements, a purchase price that is above $2,910,000. Going once? Going twice? Did you want to get up?
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Ryan Kruger, Archcrest, representing Insight. For this round of offers, it was our understanding that we had to abide by certain due diligence and close criteria this time around in regards to, I think it said a 30-day due diligence, hard money, 30-day close. So I just want to make sure that all the offers are reflective of that. Because that should have to weigh in the decision-making.
Yep. Thank you for the question. We'll just take a moment to review. And it does, on occasion, happen, as it has happened for this district, that the successful bidder is unable to complete the process, and so then we have to start over. So it's important to make sure at the front end that we have what we need. Sure, okay. Want to take a moment for counsel to discuss with Mr. Boster. Is anyone here from Silverado? Okay. We certainly would welcome if there's anything you want to say or any questions you have as well.
Push the button.
Nope.
Nope, you're on.
Our offer states that we are in compliance with the offering based on the school board's recommendation and their stats, so.
Okay, great. That's nice to have that on the record. Okay. Okay. Okay, so we have confirmation verbally as well as in writing in the purchase proposal that the buyer will follow the board resolution and all the requirements in Resolution 19-008. So it would be our intention, then, for the board to make a motion to approve the submission.
Would you have a public comment?
Oh, we have a public comment. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Lisa.
John Appolito.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito.
My name is John Appolito. I'm also a real estate broker. I've been selling real estate for probably 22 years. I don't understand the process. I don't know why the school district doesn't list these properties and see who will really pay the most, instead of just having six people know about it, and of those six, let's see which three will pay the most. Maybe there's a reason, maybe there's a law, maybe there's a rule. But the way I understood what just happened is you had a minimum bid, all three bids came over the minimum bid. That tells me that it wasn't priced high enough. So whoever's getting it for 291 is probably getting heck of a good deal. But I don't know. I'm just saying from the outlooking in after 22 years in the business, plus the $6 Million property, nobody bid on it. I don't know why you wouldn't list that. I'm not looking for a listing, but I don't know why you wouldn't list, I will if you want, but I don't know why you wouldn't list these on the open market and get the highest and best offer where everybody knows about it, not just 10 or 15 or 12 people. It seems ridiculous.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito. Just to respond, these are publicly noticed. They are, we follow a very strict Nevada revised statutes process that delineates all of the steps that we have to go through.
You could list them if you wanted.
And we, we put a public notice out. It is widely publicized. It's, you know, it's printed in the newspaper and listings, and so it is widely publicized. And certainly, I appreciate your discussion. We did have, we did have the process that is stipulated by law. So is there any other public comment? Sir, please come forward and give us your name.
Yeah, I'm Mark Kruger with Archcrest.
Hi, Mr. Kruger.
Representing Ryder NV Management. They're prepared to raise the bid. If you haven't closed that door.
I have not closed that door.
I guess to understand, does that first one have to be a certain number?
It has to be above $2,910,000.
Five percent.
That's to be 5%. So we're willing to go the 5%, which I think takes it to $3,056,000 roughly.
Will you guys do the math for me? I don't have a calculator with me.
It's actually $3,055,500.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kruger. Would anyone else like to?
Silverado Homes will bid $3,100,000.
And again, do we have to go 5% or can it just be?
First time, 5%.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. We're reading the NRS here. As you can tell, we don't do this very often, so.
I just wanted to make sure the 5%. But it has to be 5% plus the commission.
The first, the first counterbid has to be 5%. The commission is, we've stated 3% on there on the commission. That's, that's the number we've stated. But the first one has to be 5%. And then beyond that, the last time we did this, you could just back and forth, back and forth.
Which is what, yeah, we did last time. Okay. So the most recent bid was $3,001,000. Okay? Okay, sir? Mr. Kruger?
Ryder will bid $3,150,000.
Okay, $3,150,000 from Ryder.
Silverado Homes will bid $3,200,000.
I feel like I should use the, you know, I'm not going to try it, though. Cameras are rolling. We don't want to embarrass me that much. Okay, $3,200,000 is our last bid. Okay, going once. He's, he's, he's looking at his calculator there.
It's okay, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, going twice. And, okay, we will sell the property for $3.2 Million, and that goes to Silverado. Thank you for participating in the process, and congratulations. We do need a motion.
Madam President, I move, excuse me, I move that we fill the property located on Wilbur May Parkway for $3,200,000 to the highest bidder.
Which was Silverado Homes.
Which is Silverado Homes, thank you.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Calvert. Is there any further discussion? Again, thank you all for participating in this process, and we look forward to working with you on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, congratulations. Okay, we will move on then to item 3.4, which is a presentation and discussion only of changes to our attendance procedures to address chronic absenteeism in the Washoe County School District due to changes in federal and state requirements intended to reduce chronic absenteeism. We have Mr. Ben Hayes and Ms. Bryn Lapenta here, Dr. Bryn Lapenta, sorry. Welcome. The floor is yours.
Good afternoon. President Simon Holland, interim Superintendent McNeil, members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Bryn Lapenta, and I'm here to talk to you about attendance and what we've been doing since 2018 to 2020. I don't know why that made me winded.
You were practicing your bidding skills.
Yeah, that was kind of exciting. The attendance procedure hasn't changed for a long, long time. It, it hadn't had any changes at all between 1999 to 2018, except for some very minor changes, such as adding codes that we needed. Things like, we found out early on that we really needed to identify children that were runaways, and that's what that RWI code was. It was a runaway code because we wanted to be able to, the law says we have to take them off the books and withdraw them, but we wanted to be able to find them. So these were all codes that were added because we could look in the attendance and try to find children and connect later with children. And we added codes for federal requirements, such as children in transition and children in foster care. And at that time, from 1999 to 2018, if you were absent, you had to have unexcused absences more than 10% of what is required for you to attend, and we called it the 90% rule. So you had to attend 90% or more of the time in order for consequences to be triggered, such as retention or failure. At that time also, under the law, students who were present for 2/3 of a day, so if you think about high school in a six-period day, if the students were there four periods, they could be counted as present. It wasn't, if they missed two periods, they were still considered present for the full school day. There was an unlimited number of excused absences, such as medical. Parents could call their students in medically absent, like, say, my student has a sore throat, and that led to a lot of frustrations by school staff. Because the way that our procedure was written and the way that we had determined to excuse children from school, kids could be absent 40, 60, 80 absences a year and still go on to the next grade because there were no consequences if you had an excused absence. So in 2008, there was a really great report that I attached to the board, I hope you got a chance to look at it, about the importance of addressing chronic absenteeism in the early grades, grades K-1, 2, 3. They actually did the study from K to 5, and they found out that 1 in 10 kids misses more than three weeks of school. And that's, that's a lot. And they also found out that the impacts of kindergarten were, could be felt in the fifth grade. So a lot of really great information about chronic absenteeism, which just kind of makes sense. You know, you've got to be in front of the teacher in order to learn the material, right? I mean, it's common sense. But still, there are all kinds of, of experiences that people have that then have children, and this report kind of really highlighted that. In 2013, the report that I attached to the board was from 2015 because they just took the 2013 report and updated it when the new census information became available, but that was about chronic absenteeism in the nation's schools. Again, another really great report, and you can even drill down on the various counties in Nevada and see how everyone is doing as far as chronic absenteeism. Basically said the same thing that Chang and Romero found out, that students who miss three weeks or more of school are going to fall behind their counterparts. They also compared, I thought it was interesting because Chang and Romero's data was more about children and poverty, and for the civil rights report, it was more about race, ethnicity, and male, female, and those kinds of things, didn't have anything to do with poverty. So it's a nice comparison between the two. Sometime in there, I think it was when ESA was re-upped in 2015.
Every Student Succeeds Act.
Yes, sorry. The Every Student Succeeds Act was re-upped in 2015. They added a federal requirement for states to begin reporting chronic absenteeism, and Nevada, Nevada put that on us for starting, I believe, the 2018 school year, but we kind of were a little bit behind the curve, but for sure implementing in the 18, 19 school year. The State Committee for Chronic Absenteeism and for Attendance convened in fall of 2017. I was on the committee, I was one of five voting members on the committee for the whole state. We determined what could be counted for chronic absenteeism and what wouldn't be counted for chronic absenteeism. Those attendance codes were then released to the districts late April of 2018. And so kind of, even though we knew it was coming, we didn't, I really didn't think they were going to implement so quickly. We had talked to them and, about implementing in 1920 instead of 1819 because it takes a while to train everybody and get everybody going, but unfortunately, that wasn't what we were able to do. So we had to implement the change that was coming. And the big change was that now it's no longer 2/3 of a day in order to be counted present, but 51% of the day to be counted present. So anybody who moves half a day. And the biggest change for us was in our elementary schools. Previously, you know, elementary schools have basically two periods in their day, the morning period and the afternoon period. And in the morning period, we would take how many minutes they were in, figure out what 2/3 of those minutes would be, and if you missed more than that 2/3 of minutes, you would be absent. Well, now, with 50%, the cutoff was AM or PM. So that was a huge shift for folks, that a student who comes in before the period is over in AM was just tardy, and we didn't have to figure out whether they were there for the whole day or the 2/3 of a day. And a student who missed the whole session was absent. Also, there were a few limited exceptions, that an absence was an absence outside of school. One of them was SUS3, which stands for suspension. There are three types of suspension. One of them is about weapons, we don't use it, and suspension one is without work turned in. If you turn in your work, you're considered as present. The other was our temporary educational code that we had been using since 2013, which started with students who had gone, student at Damani Ranch who had gone to JROTC his junior year. And if you'll remember, we changed the calendar in 13, 14. And so when, what normally would have been him coming back to have his senior year a week or so later, now brought him into school a full four or five weeks later, and he would, it would have been impossible for him to make up the work. So we had created this code in order to help that student be able to sit in classes his senior year instead of doing all online. So when we created the new procedure, we were working with, four or five departments got together. We had some folks come from elementary, middle, and high school, and I think a mistake I made here, if I can be so bold as to say, is that I didn't have enough people. I was kind of scrambling a little bit, feeling the pressure of having to get that done for 18, 19, and, and didn't, didn't have enough people. So when we go back, you'll see a little bit further on, when we went back to talk about this for what we're going to do for 1920, we involved a lot of people. We involved anybody, we literally let anybody come and talk to us who would like to have a say. So in 1819, we talked about students who are absent 50% more or absent. The other big thing that was a huge change was now parents could no longer call their students in medical, so that was no longer an excused absence. At this time, we still had excused and unexcused absences because I, the folks that I got together with and myself, we really felt like that was a lot for people to absorb in the first year, was to take away excused absences. We also had a thing where if you made up your work, you were excused. And the idea behind that was, I was happy to see that they had kind of touched on it in Chang and Romero's report. Teachers get behind when they have to continually help students make up work. So the idea was for parents to see how hard it was to miss school by having the students have to make up their work, and also for, for students to not want to fall behind by doing their work, but also for those teachers, so that they weren't trying to help teach the class and then help this other student make up the work at the same time, you know, which teachers do on a daily basis. And so the intent was to try to lessen that burden, and unfortunately, it backfired. It wasn't, and it wasn't homework. It was actual work that was done in the classroom had to be made up. 17 out of, 17 unexcused absences would trigger retention because now it's 10% or more instead of 90% or more, so there's that little, that little one absence that caused retention or failure. And circumstance absences were removed. One of the reasons we removed circumstance absences, and this was something people felt very strongly about, was it kind of forced parents to lie to us because they weren't falling into their, into what they needed to be absent for. So we tried to remove the, the need for them to fib to us by, by giving them what was called an APT absence, and that was an absence prior to triggering failure. And we gave... And we gave students those absences so parents could just say, listen, it's my better judgment, I've got to have my kids home today, they need to be excused, and they would be automatically excused. So it was trying to encourage people to call us and tell us, I'm going to keep my kid home today, so we can have those conversations about how important attendance was. So I kind of said a little bit about what worked and what didn't work. One of the things that didn't work, curriculum spirals. So sometimes, there's not a daily assignment every day. So if there's not a daily assignment every day, it was really hard for teachers to have some kind of grade book that showed that the student had made up the work. And when I got together with teachers in the second review process, you know, that whole plan, do, study, act kind of model, what didn't work, the teacher said, it would be really great if we can just have the students have to make sure that, demonstrate to us they know the concepts. So that was one of the things that didn't work that we were able to change. Also, the process of recording the change in attendance was difficult and time-consuming. And we did go bid out with Infinite Campus to make a product, and hopefully, that product is ready, it's supposed to be ready by the end of, in August, for the teachers to use. That makes it super easy. And we showed the teachers, we showed the staff how to change the, how it changes the attendance codes, they're all super happy. Because the kid's grade book is right there, it's changes for the office staff so they don't have to, but that was, oh my goodness.
So sorry. Penalty box.
Yeah. I'm so sorry. I never get phone calls for this. So it was difficult for the attendance staff too, because they had to take these attendance summary reports and then look at those attendance summary reports, make some mass changes in Infinite Campus, and it was definitely a failing of the system. So what we were able to do this year after talking to folks in February, we made the process school-based. So the principals, the teachers, and the staff get together and decide how they want to do this process. They have some guidelines that they have to do. They have to determine, everybody has to do the same thing. How are they going to identify students who need to have their absences excused? Additionally, this year, we limited it to 10, instead of being able to have as many TEPs as you want, which is my last bullet point, the Temporary Educational Placement Code. The students, the teachers really felt there were too many of the excused codes, and it was causing people to feel like it was okay to miss school for 10 days in a row. And yeah, and was not the intention at all. But you know, sometimes what you don't know is the thing that hits you the most in the face. And so what we did is we decreased those, that number set of unlimited, now they can have 10. And one of the reasons that we did have 10, kind of, not going by my PowerPoint here, one of the reasons that we decided to have 10 absences is there's a statute, it's 392.122 sub 2, that requires that we give students 10 days who have made up their work to be counted as an attendance. So I don't know how with chronic absenteeism, where they're either absent or they're present, there's any other way than to excuse them for that absence by marking them present, and we've asked the state for that and are waiting for a response from them. The folks who we did listen to in creating the new procedure for 1920, we had listening groups with anybody, like I said, we sent emails repeatedly, we put it in the Deputy's Weekly, to ask anybody who wanted to come to elementary, middle, and elementary, middle and high school to come to meetings and tell us exactly what was not working with the attendance policy so that we could fix all those items. I really think, I really think we fixed it. So time will tell. But every issue that folks were having, we did address and we were able to find a solution working with them. We met separately with elementary, middle, and high school teachers, IT Department, Department of Administration, Intervention and District Administration, that was all one meeting, and the Department of Accountability. We also went to principal groups, the middle school and high school principal groups at LTL, Lead Teach Learn, Lead Teach Learn, I couldn't be taught, Lead Teach Learn meeting. And then after we wrote the manuals for each of those groups, we sent the manual back to them and asked them, are there any changes that you need, any changes you would like to have? So we really did try to use that whole plan, do, study, act model.
Great. Bren, can you just, I just had one quick question. Did we engage or involve any parents and families in this?
No, we did not engage or involve parents.
And I know that's hard to do. I mean, it's tough out of our 64,000 students to understand, you know, who you solicit, but I hope that there's a way we can incorporate some parent review, because I know it's been a, I know the attendance policy was very difficult to roll out last year, and we had a lot of challenges with staff, but I also think that parents really have a role in this, and so it might be something that, if there's a way, and students, our student advisory council as well, just putting it out there.
Okay. And I don't disagree with you. So the things that the listing groups asked for us was, they found it very confusing to have chronic absenteeism be one set of numbers, and what set you up for a trigger for possible failure or retention was another number. So they, so one of the things they asked us is make an absence an absence, and that was consistent throughout. Make an absence an absence. A student is simply either present or absent, don't make them excused or unexcused. So now, the reason for the absence is no longer considered. One thing the teacher said, and I don't know why I never thought of this before, it was such a beautiful thing, was teach people to budget their absences. I mean, that makes so much sense. So one of the things that I know communications is going to be hitting hard is save those absences for when you really need them, is budget the absences, and we talked to schools about talking to parents about budgeting their absences. Make the manual readable. Our manual used to be 79 pages with appendices A through M, and it really was awful. So now they're all one, two, or four-page manuals. There's a separate definitions. I included a link to our website in the packet, so you can see, pretty much you look, is there a question that you need answered, and it's kind of right there for you. The other thing was let the schools decide the consequences, and I always thought this was really interesting. They have a lot of different ways that they work with Rochelle Marillo's department in the intervention program, and work with families to help them through what the barriers are for them to attending school. And so let us work with those and decide the consequences. So we added that. And let schools decide how to manage changing the absences, which I had kind of talked about a little bit before, and we definitely put that in there. And we, one of the things that we heard, and I saw, I see again in some of the listen-to-learn things are, let us work with administration so it doesn't come top-down. And so that's part of that, is that the schools are, the principals are instructed to work with their management team, their staff, and their teachers, so that they can all decide how they're going to do as a school site to manage those changing absences.
Just a quick question, because I do get asked this question sometimes. When we have school-based decision-making, and this is a great example, sometimes we do end up with differential consequences. I've got one kid at one school, and my sister's kid is at this other school, and the absence is treated differently. How do we, how do we help respond to that?
That's a really great question. I think what I heard from the principals was, our reasons are all different that our kids come to school. If I'm an elementary school principal, it's not necessarily the student's fault that the student's not coming to school, whereas I'm a middle school, I'm a middle school principal, and those students are a little bit more responsible for getting themselves to school. It's based on the child and what's good for the children instead of having a one-size-fits-all.
So maybe that's the, the message is that it's student-centered. That's what we want to make sure that the message is to our site administrators and principals, is that it's not so much that the schools are deciding consequences for all groups of students at their school, but that the consequences should match the student. Trustee Cottle?
Yeah, thank you. Does a district give schools parameters on making decisions, or do they have complete autonomy to do what is best in that situation?
The, for how they're going to manage the absences, for changing the absences, there are guidelines. For what consequences are, I believe, I don't, yeah, there's guardrails, but they, when I was a administrator, I was very effective at attendance because I could figure out what worked for the kids. Sometimes, and this is long before the days of nutrition laws, popsicles worked. So a Friday popsicle that you got a ticket for every day would work. Now, that's not going to work in every school, so they kind of have to figure out what's going to work for themselves, you know? The other thing that the teachers were really wanted is get that teacher tool up and running, and so the office staff too, and it should be ready in August. We sent our last change in to have it changed, and it should be up and running.
Do you want to, yes, interim superintendent, do you want to say something?
Sure. So first of all, just thank you very much, Ben and Bren, for doing this presentation. We felt that it was very important for the trustees and also for the public to understand some of the changes that are happening with the attendance policy, so thank you for your work on this. Do you believe that Infinite Campus understands the urgency in working with us to make sure that that teacher tool, because if there is one comment that I'm getting continually, whether it's in our employee meetings that I'm having, the survey that I'm getting, you know, out there with 30, 60, 90-day plan, it's the attendance policy and the teacher tool. And I just think that would be huge for our teachers to know that that teacher tool is up and ready.
Yeah, I don't disagree. And I know that Mary calls them on a weekly basis, because I'm calling Mary on an every three-days basis to make sure that it's up and running, and we're doing everything we can. I think they understand, I just, you know, we're in a line, and I tried to get us moved to the head of the line on that in October of last year and was unsuccessful.
Would it be helpful if we had a-
I was going to say-
-letter from the board?
The letter from the board or the interim superintendent, that, you know, they are a vendor of ours.
Sure, yeah, I don't think, I don't think anything hurts, yeah.
It's a deal breaker to not have it available when school starts, so.
Okay.
And then also, we may want to bring this to coffee, so I see Dr. Lamarcus sitting back there. It would be a great opportunity to bring this to our Council of Family Engagement.
I think that'd be awesome, yeah.
And kind of showcase it.
That's a good venue, yeah.
Showcase it there.
Great idea, great idea.
Oh, I'm manning this. And here's the statute that says that we have to credit the days of people who's not in attendance for up to 10 days in one school year. If they make up their work, it has to be credited toward their number, the required number of days of attendance. And the way that's worded, I don't see a way around crediting, but again, we did seek approval from, in writing, from the State Department. We changed the wording so that nobody would be confused with the Temporary Educational Placement, which was TEP, to Instruction-Related Activities or Concepts Missed, partly with our conversation from the teachers. Because of the spiraling curriculum, it's not necessarily an assignment that they're missing, it's, or an activity, it's more grasping that concept and making sure that you can do, you know, the Pythagorean theorem, or, you know, conjugating a verb. So that's one of the reasons that we changed the name.
Good.
So the new attendance codes, the two for next year, are Instruction-Related Activities or IRA or Concepts Miss and MET. So if you get an IRA, that means that you're within your five per semester of high school or 10 per semester, per year for middle school and elementary school. After you have earned your five for semester or 10 for the year, it flips to MET with the tool. So then, a principal can see, has the student made up their work in their classes, and this should help students who, principals who would like to do appeals, or have a conversation, you know? I see your student is missing all this work, and they haven't, they haven't made up their work, they're missing all these days, or, you know, they're really missing a lot of concepts, you know, those good attendance conversations that you can have. We've done over a dozen trainings with anybody who wants to attend, mostly it's been attendance staff and administrators. There's been a real positive response to the changes. Again, the teacher tool, released in August of 2019, will provide a lot of support. Any questions?
Questions? I know this was a real hot button, I echo interim superintendent's comments, that really appreciate the effort you made to go out and listen to folks. I think people appreciate that, and I know there were some, certainly a lot of concerns, and you've done a great job of listening to the concerns and responding to them, and then sending it back out and saying, is this what you said, and how can we fix that? So we have, we do have some public comment. Trustee Cottle?
Yeah, thank you. I agree, I have also heard this has been an issue from staff, and being a trustee that wasn't here last year, I don't have any, I don't have anything to compare it to. So the difference from this process versus the process before was just seeking out opinions of staff and collaborating with teachers, is that the main difference?
Well, I think, we had an attendance policy that hadn't changed for 20 years, and so I think when you go and you make those kinds of changes for a system as large as ours, there's always that, what could we have done better? And so, yes, it was involving everybody, but I had intended to do that, that's kind of my style, is I like to get people involved. When we started with the, a year ago, we didn't really know where we were going as well, as, after you try it for a year and you find out what your mistakes are. You really, you really do have to find where your mistakes are, so you can correct them. And then, the more people you talk to, the more you're going to know what your mistakes are.
Okay. Other board questions? Okay, let's hear from public comment.
Selena LaRue Hatch.
Hi, thank you. I actually came to speak on something else, but I am a teacher in Washoe County School District, and I experience this a lot. So I want to thank you for those changes, they sound really, really positive. I do have a question and a concern. So my question is, if a student is making up their work, how many days can they miss and still pass? Could they, could they miss 100 days and make it up and still pass the class?
Can I answer the question? Okay. So because of the, are you elementary or middle or high?
High school.
Okay. So they get five a semester, so they would miss five, and then after that, it would depend on what your trigger number is, because those five would count as present. And then, your trigger number, if it's five, then they miss five, they fail.
Okay. So according for high school NRS, like if they miss more than 10 days, which was like our 90%, we were supposed to fail them. So even if they made those up, under this, under the 10 days, they would fail?
Yeah, it's, high schools really, that's part of the direction, is for high schools to get together and have those conversations, because I think the consequences are site-based. Because we did hear from people that if the students were missing classes and they were passing the class, that they were, the students were passing.
So that's my concern, and I don't want to run out of time, but my concern is, at my site, we were told, number one, we had to give automatic 50%, right? So even if I'd never met a student, they got a 50% on every assignment. They showed up to 10% of my class, they did 10% of the work, they're passing. And then I was told, if they're passing, you have to excuse all of their work even if they didn't do it. And so that's what I'm concerned, is that if there's not guidelines, you know, by a district level, that there is ability for it to be abused at a site level.
Absolutely, and I hope that you will connect with one another so you can follow up on that specific question and concern from that school. Thank you, thanks for letting us know about that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, Ben or Bren will get your information so we can follow up. Okay? Other questions or more public comment?
Couple have come in, I hope I say this right. Malia Puchta?
Pukta?
Close?
Close. Yeah, close. Malia Pukta. So as a parent with three kids in the district, last year, my oldest daughter was in seventh grade, and my two youngest were in, oh gosh, fifth grade and third grade. And we were in kind of a unique situation, we were at Spanish Springs Elementary, so we were year-round. Based on when spring break fell and when we were going to be off-track, they didn't coincide, and so we, as a family, were going to take our normal vacation- Um, and so, we as a family, we're going to take our normal vacation, but that was going to impact somebody. And so, we had to make a decision as to who that was going to impact. And we felt like the elementary school kids would be, it would be easier for them to miss a week of school than for the middle schooler to miss a week of school. But the thing that we, we ran into was, even though months in advance, I talked to the elementary school teachers and said, hey, this is our situation, this is what's going to happen. If you could please let me know what the work is going to be, that they're going to miss that first week back on track, we can have them work on it, or do something, you know, related, social studies, like we went to the Everglades and it's great, great science opportunity, right? I thought. But the teachers were not able to get that information together in a timely manner. So, when we came back from vacation, the kids had to go back and make up all this work. Um, the middle schooler, I'm one of those parents who think kids should be in school. Um, I, I like them being in school. I don't have a traditional job, so that frees me up to be able to do my work. But the, the middle schooler, when she did miss a day because she was sick, she had a hard time getting the makeup work from her teachers, and so she was never able to make up that work. Or if she made up the work and turned in a day or two after she returned, which was the policy, the teachers lost it, or they corrected it, gave it back to her, and then never recorded the grades. So, she never had those absences corrected.
Yeah.
Um, so I, when I worked full-time, we had sick time. I worked in a, for a corporate, in corporate America, we had 10 days, 80 hours, sick time. You took it because you didn't want to go to work, or because you were actually sick, or your kid was sick. And I think, I think something like that would maybe be appropriate, especially in the younger grades, that the parents, I think a lot of us use good discretion. Um, I think some of them, some of the students, especially in the, in the higher grades, and some parents in the lower grades will abuse any freedom you get, but that's going to be anywhere. Um, so I, I hope that this will, provides for more of like, well, she's sick because she's sick, and I don't have to make up work.
Thank you, Ms. Pukta. Natha Anderson? Ms. Anderson, welcome.
Good afternoon, Natha Anderson. On behalf of the Washoe Education Association, I just wanted to, first of all, thank you for having this at 4 o'clock. I know that there's, I know it's going to be a long one, but still, um, when we're back in school, I know that we'll have many members, so I'll be very happy to have it a little bit later. But now I'm back on track with, with what exactly, um, the discussion today. I also wanted to thank, uh, Bren Lapinta, Dr. Lapinta, and Ben for working so closely with so many educators. Um, I know that there was one group that I put together, and then there was other opportunities. And instead of it just being, we're just going to talk, those opportunities to actually bring up ideas to fix it were considered, were vetted, and then were utilized. And so, um, I just wanted to, to thank you for that much time, because it's really easy for us to go, yeah, there needs to be changes, we need to be changes, and then not actually make the changes. So, it was great to see that. So, wanted to make sure that that was out there. The other thing I wanted to answer, actually, President Simon Holland's question, from a teacher point of view, as to why there are different needs at different school sites, because there are different, or why it's not going to be standard everywhere.
Well, that wasn't my question, but go ahead.
Sorry. Well, we'll just make it your question then.
[laughing]
Because every great teacher is, you hear the question you want.
It's a question.
But now, uh, sometime, it'd be great if we could always have standard, but sometimes there are different situations, such as the student who has decide, who is, has opportunity to go to Florida, or who unfortunately might be suffering from a family emergency. And so, to have it always be standard, and it's always got to be this one way, actually takes away the personal problems. And also takes away probably the most important, as a teacher point of view, the communication between the child and the teacher. And how exactly can you make this up? Because sometimes, um, as a high school teacher, I would sometimes just be like, you know what? We took a quiz, it was 10 questions, I'm going to give you two, because I can figure out pretty quickly as to whether or not you verbally can answer it. So, that's one reason why it's not always going to be the same. The last one, I wanted to also bring up what interim superintendent, Dr. McNeil, brought up. Thank you for being so passionate about trying to get that IC tool. That is probably just as many of you have heard. We keep on getting promised it, and it would take away so much paperwork that our attendance clerks have to do, that our school secretaries have to do, and that we as educators have to do. So, um, hopefully you guys are able to get IC to take it seriously, because until then, it's very difficult for us to be able to take it seriously as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. And yes, anything we can do at the board level to support getting the Infinite Campus amended so that we can, uh, have that available to teachers is really, yeah, great, high priority. Okay?
And I have one more. John Appolito.
Mr. Appolito, welcome back.
John Appolito, I didn't go very far. Infinite Campus came up, so can I talk about Infinite Campus since it came up? Yes?
Well, you can talk about Infinite Campus as it relates to chronic absenteeism.
So, Infinite Campus, um, so people probably don't realize with Infinite Campus, everything's in there, absenteeism, discipline. The most problematic stuff in Infinite Campus is, one, it never gets deleted, and, two, the most harmful thing for students is stuff parents can't see, like discipline, minor discipline, multi-tiered system of support, and counseling. A parent would have to make an appointment with at least two different representatives at the school to see what's stored in those tabs on kids. That is the data that's going to affect kids. It's never deleted, it's uploaded every night to the State Department of Education, and I understand this, this, you guys were actually using Infinite Campus before the state mandated it. So, but what you do do also is Class Dojo. And in Class Dojo, teachers every day are entering very subjective information about kids. And it's a behavior modification program. We don't know what's going to happen with this data. It could likely be sold to the Chinese, there could be a data breach, they could go bankrupt and then sell the data. Um, I know when I was in second grade, they didn't have Class Dojo. What my second grade teacher had was masking tape. Much better than Class Dojo, because all that left was a taste in my mouth. These kids now, they have stuff that's going to follow them the rest of their lives, and I really wish you people would start trying to figure this out. That article that I gave you today from the, um, Wall Street Journal addresses this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito. Okay, thank you. Well, this item is not for action, but are there any other questions or comments from board members? Mr. Cottrell?
Yeah, I just want to comment on what we heard from a teacher. That's what my concern was about the, um, not having some sort of baseline from the district. So, I just want to make sure it's being applied correctly across the district to ensure that we don't have students that truly aren't going to school, but somehow are getting through. Um, that's one thing that I, I think as a district, we want to correct if that is going on. And I know that can be handled through the academic side of the house, area superintendents, principals. But, uh, I'm all for school, freedom, autonomy. We've got great people in the schools to do the work, but we want to make sure that across the board, there's a baseline so that we don't have these outlying cases that maybe aren't so good, so...
I agree with you 100%. It pains me to hear that, um, uh, students were excused without making up their work.
So, we'll follow up on that. Okay, well, again, thank you for all of the work to make this better, and I appreciated your talking about the Plan Do, Study Act, because, um, we really have a lot to learn from using that process more methodically, where we, we engage everybody in the planning, uh, we, we plan and, and develop some pilots that are, you know, rigorously and, and with great discipline implemented, and then observe what happens, and then we learn from that. So, I, I appreciate that that's going on, and, and thank you both, uh, and thank you to all the folks who, who weighed in on it. Ben, did you want to add anything? You, you've been quiet.
Uh, on purpose. Um, no, I, Bren is the expert in this, and I love listening to her talk. I will just note, um, well, two things, because she doesn't like to throw her own parade, which I love too. She did talk to associations and stuff before, before. It wasn't like we just went, or Dr. Lapinta went full, full speed ahead with not, out talking to him. The other one, and I know that there, there's definitely a perception, and I had this perception last, last year too, that the T E P, the Temporary Educational Placement, could give the idea that you could miss a whole bunch of days and not be held accountable, and get credit and without. But I will say that, that didn't hold out to be true, at least this year. And sometimes it takes years to build momentum, but even if we counted Temporary Education placements as an absence this year, we still decreased in chronic absenteeism. So, it was kind of a good sign that, uh, Dr. Lapinta's original intent of putting some teeth into missing schools and making up work, that it came there. We've got a long ways to go on, um, obviously, all of this work, but also chronic absenteeism, but it, it's kind of fun to see the, the progress that we're all making.
Great, okay, all right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for bringing it forward. Okay, we will go on to item 3.5, which is Presentation to the Board of Trustees for an Overview of State Assessments and Proficiency in Washoe County School District and a Brief Synopsis of the Nevada School Performance Framework. Mr. Hayes?
Good evening, uh, this is, for the record, Ben Hayes.
Your microphone. Oh, she's got you, okay.
Uh, good evening, for the record, Ben Hayes, Chief Accountability Officer. Uh, as you mentioned, we're going to go over kind of the state assessments, what, what you'll hear as colloquially, as SBAK, or Smarter Balance Assessment, but it's really our state standards-based assessment. Um, so what I'll do is provide a, a little bit of context of where that fits into our assessment system, um, kind of how much time kids are spending on tests, how we do on these tests, and then some context around that. Uh, and then I'll, of course, open it up for questions, provide a little bit more context about other measures that we kind of like to, to bring to bear when we look at these data. So, um, could we zoom that out a little bit? Do we have the slides? For the record, I'm just kidding. Um, so these, what you see on this slide are, the shaded areas are state mandated assessments. So, from the state, we have to take them, or federal, uh, federal mandates. So, VEGANS in the early kindergarten, pre-K. Measures of Academic Progress, that's the MAP test that you'll hear about, uh, through the Nevada Kids Read and Read by Grade 3 law, we have to give that, um, in K through 3, and the state does help pay for that test. And then Smarter Balanced in English Language Arts and Mathematics, those are grades 3 through 8. That's kind of our measure of pre-high school, if you will. Uh, and then Science Assessments in Grades 5, 8, and 10. And those are federal mandates that we test in those grades. If we weren't in such an over-testing kind of, uh, perception right now, I, I would like to see more science assessment, just to see the pathway as we progress, but, uh, we get pretty good information from there. And of course, uh, the ACT, uh, and the ACT Composite and Writing Test, that's given in 11th grade to all of our students, uh, in, yeah, 11th grade. And then federally, uh, there's an English Language Proficiency that we give to all students who are learning English, the English Language, um, EL or English learners. The Nevada Alternative Assessment, which is for students that can't access the Smarter Balance, they have such a disability that it doesn't allow them to access the content and, um, on that test, or the, the avenue, or the avenues in which that test is given. Uh, and of course, Finals, those are kind of state-produced and mandated for certain classes that you need on the high school pathway. So, for example, Algebra 1 and Geometry, English 1 and English, English 2, English 1, 2, and 3, 4. And finally, Career and Technical Ed. Um, there's, it's a really nice thing, there's standards across the state and across the country on career and technical skills. So, we kind of use standardized assessment for that, for the students' pathways in CTE. This slide is more of the district mandated assessments, or the district used assessments, I would say. So, we use, um, Measures of Academic Progress as an interim assessments in Grades K through 8, uh, in both reading and math. The Cognitive Abilities Test, that's to kind of provide for an equitable screener for gifted and talented education, so it's not just a teacher or parent-nominated GT, it's kind of, we use a screener and find out who has kind of abilities that they should get gifted and talented education provisions. The PSAT, or the Preliminary Scholastic Aptitude Test, kind of like a pre-SAT, is given to our 10th graders to kind of help, because a lot of the times when we take the ACT and we don't get the data back until the end of junior year, the schedules are already built. So, our high schools use the PSAT data oftentimes to find out who has kind of capacity for advanced classes and find out kind of a college-ready pathway for them. And then, of course, also, we, and that's why it started up there, we give it 11, again, 11th grade first students that want to qualify for the National Merits Scholarship. Ames Web Plus, and so now we're into the green part, and I'll go a little quicker just to make up some time. That's for progress monitoring, so it's more of kind of a, for lack of a better term, like an assessment probe. That's quick and dirty and just kind of gets you an idea if the child is making progress. Uh, and it can be reading or math. Uh, the Primary Spelling Inventory, that's early literacy development, of course. And then you see Common Finals for EL, again, a good reason to be standardized for our students learning the English language. Common Finals in Math is a way that we've, we've done it for a long time, a way to make, ensure kind of each student, or each school is covering the standards adequately. So, if you don't, if you go to one school, you're going to get the same instructional access as in another school. A, the AP, Advanced Placement and IB tests are, I mean, it's a national thing, and it helps get kids ready for college, but also gets them college-bearing credit. And finally, the AAPL, which is the Advanced, or the Assessment of Performance or Proficiency in Languages, that is for the bilingual seal, and I think you've heard, uh, some people celebrate, I think, um, they've had a real high success rate, uh, at several of our schools, and we're trying to get more and more students to take it, so they would graduate with that bilingual literacy seal. Schools like Mount Rose and, and our, um, Dual Immersion Programs are helping a lot with that too, obviously.
So, Ben, I just want to thank you for this chart, because it really helps us to see where the overlaps are. And it looks like, um, looks like for 8th graders and 11th graders, there are 11 tests throughout the year.
Yeah, if they're, if they are taking, if they're English learners and they're taking AP courses, I mean, it, it'll start stacking up.
Yeah.
Fifth grade and 8th grade tends to be, I would say, our most tested grades.
And, you know, we had, when we started the process of looking at what could we do differently a couple of years ago with regard to the budget, one of the things we heard from folks is, you know, can we, can we do less testing? And I guess I would just give you the opportunity to, to respond about, you know, what the pros and cons are of doing fewer assessments for our students.
I guess what I would, well, I'm not guessing. Uh, what I would say is, these ones are mandated, so I don't have much control over there. The, the ones in the yellow, mostly the MAP, um, so the COGAT, or the Cognitive Ability Test, that's you see in a couple of yellow dots up there, that is for, and it's, it's a quick test, but it's, provides a good equitable, um, access to our students. The MAP is more of an interim assessment that we've used for a number of years to find out kind of how, with an MTSS system, or Multi-Tierred System of Supports, a screener, and then to find out if the child is making progress kind of into, into the interim, to see, for principals to get a gauge on their different classrooms and kind of where they might need support or not. So, I think, and, and we've discussed this with schools, with leadership, and with the board when we were talking about this last time, MAP is something that we feel, the system feels it needs right now to get an educational pulse. But, um, Dr. McNeil and several others and I had a meeting just last night, and we continue to, to really take away, and, take away where we can, and then when people need the information back, give assessment information back. So, we're not going to strip, I don't want you to hear me saying that, we're not going to strip assessments, but we're going to try to rebuild our assessment system, because I think a lot of the complaints are, there is a lot of noise, um, there are a lot of mandates from Nevada Kids Read and different things like that. Uh, and also, and I'll take some of the blame for this, that we haven't articulated and communicated the benefit of assessments, how they fit into an instructional system. We're doing a lot of work that, this year, on that this year, with kind of standards-based and, and things like that. So, I, and that's kind of why I put this, so what I would say is, the, the ones we have control over, we, we wouldn't want to take away AP testing. Ames Web Plus is where we have some kind of movement in there and seeing what it's given us in, in terms of information, and can we take away some of that. So, we're working on that. All of this is to say, we're working on taking it away and also re-articulating our assessment design, our system design, so that it, it does provide, uh, it does provide useful informations. We go by, we have professional standards that we shouldn't test or survey a child if we don't use that information to make their pathway better. So, that's what we really need to pay more intense and urgent attention to right now, and, and we are.
Okay. Good, good response. Thank you.
And some more context around that. So, I said, um, 5, 8, and probably 11 are more heavily tested grades. grades. So I just provided a slide for 5th grader, and you can see the smarter would take about six hours, which is an intense, I mean, it's not six hour, easy hours. The science assessment a 5th grader would take, if the child is an English learner, then they would take that test for, in the wintertime, for a little, little over three hours. And then MAP and reading and math for three, up to three hours a year. So that totals up to 19 hours. And it works out to be 1.8% of the school year, so they're not spending all their time testing the child, the children. But in terms of re-articulating our design, you can imagine how much time the teachers are spending on these assessments. So that's one thing that we really need to look into and kind of clear off the decks where we can. And then if we are giving the assessments, to make sure that they're providing useful data and they're being used on behalf of the.
And it's not just the taking of the test, it's the preparing for the taking of the test, and then it's the follow-up once the test has been taken. And so I, and I do want to clarify for folks, that three hours for MAP reading is three hours in a year, as you said.
Yes.
It's not sitting down one time for three hours, it's spread over an entire year.
Yes, and some of the, what we've done with MAP is make some of the spring testing optional to get that kind of backed off a little bit.
Yeah.
We're looking at some situations where if they're using a certain assessment, then they'll back off the winter or the fall one.
Yeah.
So we are definitely taking it seriously, but it is something, we need to go along the pathway and to, as you'll see later, to hopefully narrow the achievement gaps more than we have. I think we need some strong standard-based information.
And I think your point is well-taken. The message is not to remove assessments, the message is to be strategic and thoughtful about what level of assessment, what timing, how much assessment is appropriate for helping that child's achievement.
For sure, yes.
Trustee Cottle.
Yeah, and also part of that is, when a school doesn't have a lot of computers, it, to them, it just feels like they're in test mode all the time, because one kid is in and out of his tests fairly fast, but that school might be in testing for eight, nine weeks, because they only have so many computers to get everyone through. So from a school perspective and the staff, it feels like it's test, they're testing all the time, because they are, just because they got to get everyone through with what they have. And so I think we'll see the benefits with these new schools coming on, is hopefully be able to shorten the window of the testing, so it will feel like they're not in test mode all the time.
Yes, and I'll add to that, frustration for a kid, if it's a four-year-old computer and it's kind of clogging up a little, but there, I will, I'm glad you brought it up, because I'm not sure if you were going to say this super to the McNeil, that there is a lot of work being done to refresh not just the new schools, to get them more devices, but to get all schools more devices, so they're quicker and more efficient, and you can kind of use them more, obviously still secure, but in the classroom and things like that. And also, just to state, we wouldn't be buying a bunch of technology just for testing, they're also going to be used for instructional activities during the school year.
Yes, and Superintendent, and then Trustee Kelly.
Just really quick, just to add, the Office of School Leadership with Ben's department has been working very hard around professional learning communities, to make sure that our teachers and our principals understand what the assessments are used for. There's no sense in giving an assessment if I don't understand what the content is and what it means. And so there's been a lot of work, a lot of development around professional learning communities, and you'll see at our August 2nd LTL kickoff, Lead Teach Learn kickoff for administrators, a lot of work around professional learning communities. We have a saying within our leadership team, the hardest thing a student should not walk into is in the lab when we're starting the Sparter Balance Assessments Test. We should be making these types of decisions and working throughout the school year for that as well.
Okay. Trustee Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I don't know if it's possible to do this, but I would be curious to know what percentage of the school year is the lead-up to a test and after the test, because, you know, 1.8% of the school year is spent on testing, I mean, that doesn't seem like too big of a number, and I'm just throwing out some guesses here, I mean, if it's 6% of the school year is teachers, how much they spend leading up to a test, and 2% of the school year is afterwards, that doesn't seem so bad either. But what if it's much higher? What if it's 20% leading up? And I also know that, you know, some students would be different. Some teachers might spend 20% for a certain classroom, but another classroom, for whatever reason, might have to spend 30% of their time. So I don't know if there's a way to track that district-wide, or even if you could just maybe do a pilot of a school or two, I'd like to know what those percentages might be, because I've heard from so many teachers, from parents, from my son, so other students have said this, too, that testing just seems to really take up a lot of time, and, but I'd like to quantify that, if it's possible.
For sure, I won't promise 100% accuracy, but yeah, I think through observations, like you're saying, some pilot testing and some defined surveys, we can do it. And I hear the same thing as you, so I do appreciate the need for this data.
Okay.
Okay, so now I'll go, so that's the kind of the assessment system as it sits, and remember, it's to get every child to the graduation stage with as many options as they could, as they can, and when we say all, all students, and as you'll see, some student populations aren't doing as well, or we aren't doing as well with, I would say, as others. So what you see here is English Language Arts in our elementary schools, the performance. And one of the things that jumps out at me every year, and I still don't get over this shock, is that there's less than, fewer than 50% of our students meeting the standard. Now, it, I will say, just for context, this is a tougher test. It's designed around kind of the Nevada Academic Content Standards, which were based off the Common Core Standards, and those were designed to be kind of, to put a child on a college-ready pathway. So I went back, just when I was sitting back there, to make sure, and five years ago, when we were giving the state assessment, it was up in mid-60s towards 70% proficient that you would see here. So the new test kind of deflated this, and I always, in schools, we'll tell you this, our principals and educators and teachers will tell you that Level 2 on Smarter Balance, this is Level 3 and 4, and I should say that, clarify real quickly, there's four levels on Smarter Balance. One is kind of emergent, developing, that not quite accessing the standard, but needs to be scaffolded up. Level 2 is really kind of accessing the standard, partial understanding, but not mastery yet. Level 3 is mastery, and Level 4 is kind of excelling, or at a higher level. So this is what you see here, is the percentage of students at Level 3 and 4. Again, we don't want to be a system with fewer than half of our students at, at level, at grade level. As you see later, even some of our best-performing states like Connecticut are in the 60s, which still isn't that great, but it'll feel much better if we get to a majority, over 50%, and on our way to 60%. The other disheartening thing, I mean, we've talked about it several times, but the achievement gaps here. And you can see, so as we go across, that's the district as a whole, so if you drew an imaginary line across there, you can see students, student populations that are under the line, or have a gap, and students that are over. And the toughest ones to see are those, the ones that are on almost half of the Asian and white students. So we know that we're, the pathway isn't treating them equitably, we're not supporting them equitably, and we've got work to do there, again, a lot of which is in the works, but it's something that we'd like to see move a lot more. This is elementary.
I just wanted to go back to the English Language Arts, and I was a little discouraged to see it going down since 2016 in some areas, throughout, throughout the charts.
Yes, and.
That has really, that was really discouraging. And I know it's discouraging for you, and it's discouraging for everybody, but I know everybody's working on it, but we've got to do better.
We do, and, and this is the moment where I hate to sit up here by myself, we've gotten preliminary results for this year, and it doesn't look any better. It doesn't look worse, it's just kind of flat. And a lot of us are already talking urgently, we've got to do better. Psychometrically, I can tell you it's a reliable test, but that's not what we want, we want it to be moving up and up and up, and in better systems. And I do think, I genuinely think, like Dr. McNeil said, sometimes the hardest thing is, the hardest act, content our kids see is when they take the S-Back in the spring. So we've got to kind of talk more about the standards. We've had a couple of organizations in our schools, and I have to say, I mean, I would be an idiot if I didn't, but I really intensely know, you've all been in schools, how hard they're working out there. It's really support systems and material systems and stuff that, and professional learning, like Dr. McNeil said, that we're going to get students to do better. So I think, I'm optimistic for several reasons on that, but it is disheartening to see this over and over again. But we've had, speaking of materials, we've had some organizations kind of do audits of classroom-level material and stuff, and oftentimes, kids aren't even seeing grade-level material and stuff. So that's where the adoptions and the systems that are getting in place, and talking about the standards and PLCs and all that, will start to pay off.
Madam President, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Does the district know how these scores look by school?
Mm-hmm.
And so, is that information helpful to know maybe which schools are a little behind versus others, to know where, to maybe tackle, tackle the issues to raise these numbers? If that's helpful?
For sure, and we approach that in a few different ways. We, I mean, I really, it goes without saying, I'm proud to be part of this district. We have a pretty good data culture, where our schools, our teachers, and our principals are not afraid of data, to the extent that we're able to give them variability, what we call variability charts every year, that shows kind of, of similar schools like yours, here's how you're performing, and here's the difference, here's some of the better performing, here's some of the not-so-well performing, and they go and talk to each other. When we're building school performance plans, we do peer reviews, so that they go talk to each other for ideas, criticize punch holes in their ideas and stuff like that. The other thing, as you know, we have kind of acceleration schools that are really, when we see them low, and when they need some more supports, we put them in there. One thing I will, and I should have said this a couple of minutes ago, one of the bright spots, and there are, there are a lot of bright spots in these data and this year's data, but our acceleration schools and our Title I schools in general did, outgrew the district as a whole this year. So it shows where we put supports, just like you're suggesting, it pays off, so.
Trustee Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. And I wanted to ask about textbooks. I mean, how much of the, of the flatlining do you think could be caused by the fact that for many years, our teachers had to rely on older textbooks and textbooks that hadn't been updated? And fortunately now, we've had the money to start purchasing new textbooks, and they're starting to get out into the classrooms, but it takes time to kind of, do you think that's going to help get things moving in the right direction now that we've got new textbooks coming in?
I do, I was looking back for Deb. I'll take it, but she can throw something at me if she wants to comment. I'll just say anecdotally, and we met a lot with acceleration schools this year, but other principals, and they're saying absolutely, yeah, give us, now that we have a system in place, and we kind of know how to use it and stuff, and it does take a little bit of time, I wish we were further ahead on three years of math, but, but yes, now that we have that, now that we have especially kind of a full suite of English Language Arts stuff coming up, and literacy stuff coming up, you can palpably feel the excitement from schools. It wasn't so true with math at first, because I think it had been so long of an adoption, but now everybody's kind of clicking and getting their systems, and I think they're real optimistic about the ELA adoption. I don't know if you would add?
Sure, so I think there's a fine balance, and, you know, we have sent out the message to all of our schools that, with the English Language Arts adoption, that that's the adoption. So if you're using a different program, there's a difference between supplanting the program and supplementing the program. And there's not an intent to limit the amount of creativity within our teachers, because that's why we have amazing teachers, but we also want to make sure that they're following the standards and the curriculum that's been adopted. And so there's a lot of emphasis this year on professional development for our teachers, Curriculum and Instruction is working on that now, but then there's also regular monitoring visits through the area superintendents, and they will be making sure that, you know, the supplements and the supplant issue as far as the curriculum is, they're watching it.
Ben, I, I know we want to go through all of this, but I think, I think we get the message, we've seen these graphs, I just, rather than going through the detail of each one of those, I think let's move down to looking at the context.
Okay, wonderful, and thank you.
If, if there's any objections, I.
Yeah, I think you get the idea, and some of our populations are struggling more when you see, especially students with an IP, and English learners. So the pattern remains the same, I guess is the main thing I would say. So you can see this kind of, the math, what we're showing, or what I'm showing you, and you have in your packet, is English Language Arts in the middle school, elementary schools, then math in the elementary schools, English Language Arts in the middle schools, math in the middle schools, and the same patterns kind of exist. You can say, I'll skip over this real quick, because one thing that I would point out, and these are where we get into the context slide, so you can see this is English Language Art, or, sorry, this is math performance, and 3rd grade's our highest performing grade, and then it kind of starts going down as content gets more complex. But the bright side of this picture is that we start right about even with the state in math in 3rd grade, but by the time we get up to 8th grade, you can see that we can start outgrowing them. If you look at all, just take all 3rd through 8th graders as a whole, as you can see, we're about five percentage points above the state in there, which is significant. And this kind of mirrors what we saw in that New York Times study that we've talked about before, in the Stanford study, the Riordan Study, that from 3rd to 8th grade, Washoe County School District turns out to be one of the top 85% in the country. That says something about our systems and our pathway, it also says that we start low in 3rd grade, I think.
And it also says that we, as a nation, all need to do better.
Yeah, for sure, yeah. This is ELA, same graph, but for English Language Arts, so start off in 3rd grade, a little bit higher, and then grow as we go up, so, but at the same time, we're a little bit closer to the state than we are, and it pains me to see, after several years of Read by Grade 3, that we're a little bit being out, we're being outperformed a little bit by the state, so we can do better there, I think. The second piece of context is, kind of now that we're in the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium, and that's what S-Back stands for, Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium, there's several states, the idea, the promise was that we'd have 20-something states to compare our data to, to compare growth to, that never, that promise was never realized to the extent it probably could have been. But we were able to find the Western states on here, and I've made some comparisons to Washoe County School District versus Nevada, versus other Western states, and you can see this, what we're looking at is math here, going from 3rd to 8th grade as you go down, and we're about 4th, right in the middle of the pack, 3rd, 4th, 5th. And if you see the same thing for English Language Arts, we're a little bit lower, but we're still certainly not last in, along the pathway. If you look at states like Connecticut, like I said earlier, they're more like 62, 64 percentage, percent proficient or meeting standard, so we wouldn't compare well with them, that's why I kind of stuck with the Western states here.
Well, and there's also different levels of educational attainment of parents, which is a.
That's the best segue I could have asked for. So, you've all seen that quality counts, and this is one thing that drives me a little crazy, and I'm not saying that Washoe County School District is the best nation, and we all know that we want work to do, we all know, and I think there's a lot of great discussions about getting more funding for schools, to invest more in kind of targeted supports for students learning these standards. But this really tells a story of Nevada transitioning from older Nevada to kind of newer Nevada, so, and it tells a story that we're not really 50th in the nation on student achievement. So the middle kind of cluster that you see there is more of the K-12 cluster, if you will, and you can see, I mean, we're not the middle of the pack, but 42, 41 in Nevada as a whole, that's certainly not last place, and Washoe, as I said before, is about five percentage points in math and two or three percentage points in ELA. But some of the other interesting things to me on that is certain funding, you can see the top paragraph, 48th in funding, but also parental education is 51, as President Holland just alluded to, but parental employment is 20, steady employment 32, and things like that. So you can kind of see that we've had a system built for an awful long time for an old economy, and we're shifting to a new economy now, that's why it's encouraging to see, the kindergarten enrollment is 19 in the nation, preschool enrollment, we've starting to invest a lot more there, so I think some of this is going to, what we're seeing is a shift. We're seeing, I think, number one, and most urgently for me, is that we're not really 50th, in Nevada, we're not really 50th on all these outcomes. There's some investments that haven't been made, but even, even so, on some of the NAEP performance, some of these, that's Smarter Balance that you just saw, and graduation rates, we'd be right around 25, 30 probably. So I wouldn't say that we're 50th, and I would say that there's some signs that investment are paying, investments are paying off, and we are making investments, so this is an optimistic figure for me.
Okay.
Does there, I'll stop there, those are kind of the context ones, if you have any questions around these, kind of the few Smarter Balance, the consortium states, and I can always pull more information, when I alluded to, kind of the promise wasn't being fulfilled, not all states support or report all their Smarter Balance data, and some states have dropped out of the consortium as well, so we don't have all of those to compare them to, but we do look at benchmark districts to every bit, to the extent that we can.
Trustee Cottle.
Yeah. Ben, could you go to the slide where the Nevada School Performance Framework, and just explain how the star rating works? Because I know a lot of people ask, what is the five-star schools, the three-star school, what goes into the stars?
Yeah. Do you mind? Do you mind if I take just one minute and do a, so this growth slide will lead into the next one. So growth, what we've been talking about is proficiency or kind of what testing people call status, or where a child is in accordance with the standards. Growth is how a child's doing longitudinally from year to year, and how the state measures that, I'll do a quick one, is basically on a normed, norm test. And so how you interpret it, and why it's good that it's normed is it compares academic peers with each other. So students that are starting out a little bit lower compared to students that are kind of in that similar performance range, students that are a little bit higher are compared with each other. So then when you get an SGP, which our schools get, our students get, and our schools get, it shows that you can interpret, you can interpret it on a normative scale. So when we all went to pediatricians as a kid, they would say, Ben Hayes is, I don't know, and his head is in the 80th percentile. He's got a big head. But if my height was in the 20th percentile, then I'm behind 80% of the kids, and when it comes to height, bigger head than most of the country, shorter than most of the country. So you can interpret that as a parent, you can interpret that as an educator, you can interpret that as a leader, building leader. So that's the growth measure, and that's why it's important for me to, because there, I mean, proficiency is related to socioeconomic status, there's a lot of research on that, and our job is to grow the kids up to where we want them to be. So that's why growth is an important measure in our system. So then when we get to the Nevada School Performance Framework, what we want, what the story it tries to tell, and it's, it never can tell the whole story of a school, it can't even tell the whole data story of a school because there's so much that goes into it. But what it tries to tell with the state assessment is, at this particular school, are students where they should be academically? If not, are we growing them on their way to be there? And if so, are we still challenging them to grow further and further? So then what you would see, and these are the measures that go into it, but I'll back up one more time here, just for ease of interpretation. A one-star school would kind of imply that they're not quite there where they need to be, or they're not yet there where they need to be, and they're not growing to the extent that they should. So that school needs more supports. If it's a five-star school, kids are kind of meeting the proficiency, they're in the top 15% of the states in terms of their building, and they're still challenging the kids and they're still growing. So you can, a three-star school is kind of, yeah, they're getting there and they're growing there, but they're not knocking out of the park. So, and the way I like to interpret it, because I know our schools work incredibly hard and none of us have to wear stars on our sleeve or on our school for the year at a time. So I like to call this the classification for one year of how that one year went. And again, it doesn't tell the whole story, but when we see a one or two-star school, it doesn't mean it's a bad school. To me, to us, it means it's a school that needs some more supports and some more kind of things in place to get the kids growing up there. So I'm not sure if that was too quick of an overview, or if I answered your question. So again, I think the simplest way is to say it is, are the students hitting their standards? If not, are we growing them there? And if so, are we still challenging them? Now you go into different, that covers reading, it covers math, we also put science proficiency in this, and this is the whole state that uses this. For the first time this last several years, we're kind of doing the same growth for English learners. Are English learners, are they mastering language? If not, are they growing there to exit English Learner Services? And then of course, things like chronic absenteeism and school climate are in there. So another way to interpret the stars that I just told you, if five stars kind of are performing in the top, let's say 15% of the state, one stars are kind of in the bottom 15% of the state. And as I said, that's what our acceleration zone is built for, so that we can kind of move them up to three stars as quick as we can. So the final thing I'll say is, this story that the framework tries to tell, and with the assessment, that's kind of the direction that we want the assessments to be in the profile of a graduate, one portrait of a graduate, when we in the future hopefully go down this road, is if we build with the community, with students, with parents, community members, boards, and educators, what is our promise to the community of a graduate of Washoe County School District? And then the pathway and assessment should help tell the story of, how is that child doing on this promise, on growing towards the graduation stage of this promise that we've laid out? So that's one of the things I'm also excited about, getting us to align our systems to proficiency, but also kind of what our promise is of a graduate who walks across the graduation stage, can go to college, can go to a career in technical, can do anything that he or she wants. So, and I think that assessments will, are, when I say we'll try to articulate our assessment system, it's designed for this kind of purpose, is to see how a child is growing on their way there, to tell the parents and the teachers kind of how the child is growing on the way there.
Dr. McNeil?
I just want to thank Ben, and the board knows this as well. So Ben has been an instrumental leader at the state level as well for Nevada School Performance Framework, and he has given a great amount of input, because it's not all about a star. And our principals, I know when I was a principal, one of the worst days was when, you know, your AYP rating would come out.
Annual yearly progress.
Yearly progress under NCLB, no child left behind. But our principals, our teachers, our schools, they absolutely understand what's involved with the NSPF, and it's just more of that comprehensive story that goes into establishing your school performance plan, what those goals and objectives are, and then following through. And part of our commitment is to kind of clear the decks on some of the minutia out there, and really kind of focus back in on what happens in front of the classroom every day.
And we all should not forget that Nevada is at about the 25th or 26th percentile for funding to education nationwide, so that certainly has an impact on what we can do to provide those supports and those necessary resources. Okay, questions, comments? We have a public comment, and before that, I just, I also want to say on behalf of the board, how much we appreciate the data that you and your team make available, and just the analysis that goes into it. It's not just, here's the, here's the chart, but really helping to dig deeper. So really appreciate the work you all do, thank you.
Yeah, they are an incredible team, for sure.
Public comment. Todd Bailey?
Mr. Bailey.
Thank you very much, Madam President. We are submitting a public information request for all expenses made for computer adaptive testing since 2009, the last 10 years. To fully understand the commitment Washoe County School District makes to computer adaptive testing, we also need to know and understand the following information, dates of testing, prep time, pretty much everything that Mr. Hayes did in his report. So actually, if I could just get a copy of that sent to me, I think, I think that'll cover most of the information outside of the budget request. For those of you who don't know, computer adaptive testing is where students who answer correctly are then asked questions about things they've never been taught. Parents are not allowed to see the questions being asked of their children or the results, and there's absolutely no transparency and no accountability in computer adaptive testing. We've been talking about this for at least five or six years, myself, John Appolito, some other people. We've talked about it here at Washoe County School District, we've talked about it at the state, we've talked about it in Washington DC. And I think what the report just illustrated is we're seeing diminishing returns. Common Core is producing diminishing returns year after year for more and more investment, more time, more stress, and I'm content to just keep reviewing this year after year. But we've emphasized the fact that the Common Core and the Spartan Balanced Assessment has flaws. That's why states are dropping out of the consortium. That's why you have people in multiple states almost throwing riots at meetings like this over Common Core. So I think the number one thing is to get an idea of the cost. That's why we've submitted public information request 190723-002, because I think once you see the cost over the last decade of computer adaptive testing, it's going to really put into context the report that Mr. Hayes made. And Mr. Hayes, it's good to see you again. You always do great work. I know you're all over the state and the district, working on these things, and it's appreciated. I'm one of the people who advocated for computer testing and these standards years ago. You can find Washoe County School District video of that. However, it's completely grown beyond the expectation of taxpayers. It's completely grown beyond the results that we expected to a point that's just not acceptable. So I think the board has to go beyond what you're doing and start reporting this to the state. Start talking to the governor, start talking to the Nevada Department of Education, that you're seeing these diminishing returns in the Common Core curriculum and the testing associated with it. And at some point, you're just going to have to accept that and change course. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Did you want to respond at all, Ben?
Well, I will say thank you for the comment, and we will look into the cost of it. I guess I would, I mean, I don't have a dissertation or thesis right now. I would say that after about seven, eight years of the Common Core, we have more advanced honors diplomas than we've ever had, and that's not something that things like the attendance implication or grade inflation would, would, would impact. So I think those are real gains. Where our AP and IB, participation and performance on those exams is better than it's ever been. I think what we saw in this presentation was a harder test, and we haven't responded well as, as well as we could as a system, nor has the nation, as you pointed out. But we, if you look at advanced, kind of when we talk about that graduation stage, I think our students are more prepared, I don't think, I have an educated guess, that our students are more prepared than they've ever been in Washoe County, with advanced diplomas, with CTE pathway, and with advanced placement and IB courses.
Which are national tests.
Yes.
Yeah, that's placement. Thank you.
Yes.
And John Appolito?
Mr. Appolito? I feel like I should get you some ice for that arm.
No, that's okay. Thank you very much, John Appolito, President of Protect Nevada Children. I scribbled out everything Todd just said, except that I added a little more. Hopefully I can read the parts. On the Sback test, the, about half the states have dropped the test. So Nevada's not one of those yet, hopefully they will be. Every indication that I have from the state of Nevada says they will go down with the ship, will be the last state giving the test. That's what it looks like. Oregon State and California both have official opt-out procedures for the Sback test. In fact, in Oregon, I think it was Springfield, Oregon, every school board member voted and told parents they should opt out of the test. I know, I've never heard that from you guys. Well, there was a guy that used to be here, Howard Rosenberg, who had big concerns about the Sback, but I don't know. You guys sit here and say, oh yeah, our scores are lower, and this and that, and no one ever says, well, maybe we should try to get rid of this test. And Todd's right, this is a computer adaptive test. So Todd and I are both in third grade, we sit down to take the test, maybe Todd is smarter than me, so he gets different questions than I get. Except if he's really smart, kids in other states have realized if they answer the questions wrong, the test is much shorter. I don't know if Todd's quite that smart. But, but that has happened, so some really brilliant kids have gotten very low scores on the Sback. The other issue is the opting out in our state. Protect Nevada Children did have a bill this session, AB 312, and some of the language, I believe, came from Washoe County School District. And what that did, and I know Ben didn't get into this at all in his star rating, but if not enough kids take the test at a school, like Incline Middle School, for example, we've actually lost a complete star rating because not enough kids have taken the test. AB 312 was to remedy that. Unfortunately, Tyrone Thompson was the chair of the committee, he would not hear the bill because it was brought by a conservative. It was very frustrating. I talked to Tyrone two days before the dead, no, the day before the deadline. Don Gallimore, our friend from the NAACP, talked to him two days before the deadline. He really didn't understand the issue, it was very frustrating. The other thing, the MAP, the MAP, oh, Sback, on Ben's slide it said six hours. Incline Middle School allows every kid at least 10 hours to take the test, and then if they need more tests, they can have more tests. So I questioned Ben's numbers. The MAP test is also a computer adaptive test now. It didn't used to be, I don't know if Todd knew this, the MAP, there's been good articles written about the MAP test, of how they actually monitor the time between responses from these kids. I think that might have been the Washington Post. It's very frustrating, and we tried, and we had the bill, and we were hoping to get more support from the district, and I think we had some. I think it was really Tyrone who killed it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Appolito.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions that board members have? This is not an action item, so, but we very much appreciate it. And one of the things that we as a board commented on throughout the year is that we want to be focusing more of our time in board meetings on student achievement and making sure that we're, we're learning, we're, we're paying attention to the data, we're understanding the data and analyzing it with you. So appreciate the time that you're putting into this, and we will, we will continue to be with you on this journey, asking the questions and trying to, trying to solve so that our student achievement improves. So thank you, Ben. Okay, we have a big item before us. Does anyone need to take a quick break before we move into the next one? Yes, no? No? Okay, all right. Our next item, and Dr. McNeil is removing herself from the chambers for this discussion of, discussion possible action to provide direction to staff regarding the process for selecting the superintendent of schools for the Washoe County School District, including but not limited to consideration of the timeline for hiring, the process for soliciting input from trustees, staff, students, families, and community members on the professional qualifications and personal characteristics that are desired for a superintendent, the interview and selection process, the scope of recruitment efforts, local, regional, or national search facilitator options, and the possible issuance of a request for proposal for a consultant or search firm to support one or more of the search activities. And thank you, Ms. Ellison, for helping to lead us through this. I do want to say before we start, trustee Taylor, Dr. Taylor, had a prior commitment out of state and had to, had to leave for a flight, and then we're also missing Vice President Raymond, and this is a very, very important discussion. I think that we want to begin the discussion, but I would just share with fellow trustees my concern about making binding decisions tonight when we're missing two of our trustees. I just want to share that personally. But I do want to get us started, because I know these processes are very long-term, but I think there are things that we can give some direction on tonight, but let's, let's begin the discussion and see where we go. So thank you, Emily.
Great, thank you, President Simon Holland, Emily Ellison for the record, and Chief Human Resources Officer here at the district. And I think I win longest board item title, right?
Yeah, today, anyway.
We do have a few, a few things to talk about, and I think what you said a moment ago is really important, right? There's a lot of things to be considered as a part of this process, and so getting that dialogue started and getting a feel for, you know, where everybody stands on some of the major milestones that are a part of that process will help to guide the work moving forward. So as much as I would love to have some decisions and some direction this evening, also I'm sensitive to the fact that we want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to weigh in, and I think it's a good, a good place to start. So that said, as I thought about how best to support the conversation, what I've done is put together a slide deck that really outlines some of the big buckets of activity that will happen as a part of this process, and some important things to take into consideration. And my thinking was, here's a little preview of what that looks like. My thinking was that we could go through each of these items, I could share some perspective for you. JJ did a tremendous amount of research to help support this item too, and so between her and I, we have a lot of information to share, things for you to consider, and then just kind of open up the discussion on those items. I put them in the order that I did in a very intentional way, because there is sort of a cascading effect, if you will, related to some of these decisions, and I'll get into that a little bit more in just a minute. If you are comfortable taking action on any of these items, I talked to Chief General Counsel Rombardo before the meeting, and of course, there's always the option to, as we go through the items, make decisions, or wait until the end to consider particular options. And then what I've done in the last couple of slides that you'll see is, as we consider each of these milestones or activities, if you will, at the end, I've taken four of the different search options that are available, so like a national consultant or a local consultant, et cetera, et cetera, and then kind of filtered them in a matrix through the lens of each of these items. So if you are looking at timeline, for example, you know, what do you need to consider as it relates to a consultant or district staff facilitating and that, that sort of thing? So I'm probably not doing a great job of explaining what I've done, but you'll get a feel for it as we move through the, as we move through the information. So I will kind of launch into the milestone or the activity, share a little bit of information for you, and then open it up for discussion, if that makes sense.
That's great.
All right. So that said, I mentioned that I put these in a very specific order because of the- So that said, I mentioned that I put these in a very specific order because of the domino effect for particular decisions. And the timeline in which we hope to have a new superintendent in place is a significant element that will have an impact on a lot of other decisions. So for example, the way we gather stakeholder input into the desired qualifications and skills and experience of the ideal candidate is obviously going to be timeline dependent. So if you said, we really want to have someone in place by, you know, the end of the first semester, well, then that feedback gathering process is going to look very different than it would if you said, we'd like to have someone in place at the start of next year. So timeline is a significant consideration in terms of the steps in the process. It also, of course, influences district operations, planning, and resources. So being able to come away with some guidance for what people can expect is important for operational planning. We're going to have another item in just a moment regarding interim superintendent compensation. And so the timeline in which Dr. McNeil will serve as the interim superintendent may be something that you want to take into consideration in determining her compensation. There's just a lot of different elements that are affected by what sort of a timeline we're shooting for. And then also, the timeline will help us back map the different activities that need to happen as a part of the search process, right? So again, if we had a very aggressive timeline and we said, we want to have somebody in place in three months, that's going to really change the level of resources that need to be devoted to that. It's going to change what those particular steps look like and how we execute on those things. So timeline is obviously a very, very important consideration. And then finally, the availability of candidates is something to consider. So out of, you know, professional responsibility and a sense of professional obligation, having someone leave their current position right at the start of the school year to assume a new position is going to be a much bigger ask than perhaps taking a little bit longer and maybe having someone in place after they've concluded their contract year. So most people have secured their contracts for the upcoming school year, and that's something that should be considered as well.
And that certainly will impact our pool of interested folks.
Exactly.
So we do have to consider that. I think if trustees have questions or comments as we're going, I think that would be valuable for Emily. So when we go through each one of these elements, I will just share that I know that it's, we've gone through a lot of disruption in our district in the last few months, and it's absolutely necessary that there be time for everyone to sort of stabilize and to have some certainty and to feel that we know where we're going and what the path is and the vision. And at the same time, we don't want to leave everybody hanging forever. You know, I am very sensitive, and of course, we've got a lot of national information from superintendent searches everywhere, all over the country, that reflects what Emily has said, that we will have a different pool of candidates if we do attract people from a larger scope than just locally. We will have a challenge having availability of the absolute best qualified people if we don't have patience with this process. So just as one trustee, I want to clarify, my perspective is that, no, I'm not hoping that we'll have somebody in place by January. If we did, that would be wonderful, but I want, this is such an important decision for our community, for our region, for our 64,000 students and our 8,000 employees. We want to do this right. So that's just one trustee, but anyone else who wants to weigh in on that timeline, please Mr. Cottrell?
Yeah, so for me, I would say if we can have someone in place for sure by the start of the 2020, 2021 academic year, that would be probably the latest we want to go, to me. Going too fast isn't obviously going to be a good thing, and I do agree, we need to stabilize a little bit. We need to kind of take a breath, really dig in and get as much feedback as possible because from what I've heard from the community is, you've been 0 for your last two. You can't go 0 for three. And this is a very, very important decision that we have to make, and we need to take our time and do it right. And I believe the district's in capable hands with a current team in place. The next school year will be great. So if we don't have someone in place the following academic year, I would say that is appropriate. But if it happens faster, that's great. I think if we go, if we aim to go fast, we set ourselves up to make some blunders, and that is going to be an issue that could be really catastrophic for our district. So patience is key. I would agree with you.
And certainly, it would be desirable for whoever is selected to be able to be with us through the summer before that school year starts so that there can be appropriate planning. That would be my hope, that we could have somebody June or July of 2020, no later than that. Trustee Calvert?
Yes. Emily, you had mentioned the fact that a lot of the superintendent, I mean, the superintendents are already contracted, so how long are their contracts? And if the contract is broken, how would that affect us?
So I think it really depends on the circumstance, right? So there's current superintendents, but then there might also be, you know, deputy superintendents or area superintendents from other districts that could be potentially interested and qualified for the position. Every state has different regulations related to licensed professionals and their contracts. So in Nevada, for example, let's say we were going to attract someone from another district, there's usually a timeframe in which they have to notice their district, that they do plan on returning for the next year. Here, that happens around March, April timeframe, depends on the, or I'm sorry, May timeframe, depends on the legislative cycle, too, because the date changes a little bit during legislative years. And if someone indicates an intent to return, and then there is also a timeframe at which there's like a no backing out clause, if you will, and so within Nevada, if you're going to leave one district to go to another and you're in that window of time where you have to get permission to be released from your contract, the district that you're leaving can say no. And then if you opt to leave anyway, they can take action against your license with the state licensing division. So that's how it looks in Nevada. Every district and every state is going to be a little bit different depending on what their statute says. But if we were looking at a timeline of having someone in place prior to the 2020 school year during the summer, that's probably pretty reasonable. Yeah.
Okay. Trustee Minneto?
And that's what I'm in total support of, is, you know, about a year out, a little less than a year out.
Okay. Great. Trustee Cottrell?
Yeah, and for high-level executives, it's common to potentially make the hire, but then the start date isn't for three months. Or, so there could be a transition period to where we may, let's say, decide on somebody in the winter, but then they're actually not going to leave their job and actually start here, they relocate potentially, if that's the way we go, until three months later, four months later. So there is some wiggle room if we aren't trying to go 100 miles an hour.
Absolutely.
So that's common for high-level executives, so we can be flexible with someone else's contract if that's the way we decide to go, right?
Yeah, absolutely. I think what we would be trying to do in terms of a timeline is obviously get some general guidance from you all in these kind of big buckets of activity, and then come back and propose an activities-based timeline, so what the major milestones are and when we kind of want to have those accomplished. I think if we were shooting to have someone identified, let's call it before the middle of April or even maybe the end of April, for the vast majority of candidates, if they know before then, they'll be able to give appropriate notice and not violate contracts and jeopardize their license. So whether that's December or April, depending on all of the other activities we want to build into the timeline, what you're saying is absolutely correct. There's going to be almost certainly some lag between selecting a candidate, making an offer, having them accept, and then them actually starting.
Okay, good discussion. Great. Okay, let's keep going.
Awesome. So the next thing to consider is obviously one of the most important steps, and that's identifying the desired qualifications and characteristics for our next superintendent candidate. And the grid kind of suggests which stakeholders we want to make sure are involved in that process. And then I put together, based on the research that we've done, some ideas about how one might go about gathering that feedback. There are probably other ideas that you have as well about, as you've thought through, like how are we going to get stakeholders involved in creating the ideal candidate profile and the minimum qualifications, of course? And so just some things to consider, right? Obviously, surveys are an option when it comes to working with Board of Trustees, perhaps conducting individual interviews to understand what each trustee is looking for in the candidate. I think a work session could potentially be appropriate depending on what resource you opt to use to facilitate this process. I believe that the board would have final approval over the job description and what that posting ends up looking like, so that'll be another thing that we need to build into the timeline. You can read through the ideas for staff and students, but I did think it was kind of an interesting thought to engage the Student Advisory Board as it relates to helping create that criteria. I think when it comes to staff, if we can lean on our, I hope we can lean on, and I'm sure we can, lean on our associations, right? And whether that's having them help us facilitate information sessions, town hall type things, that's something to think about. From a community perspective, we have a lot of existing district committees. Perhaps you want to leverage them in gathering feedback. So some ideas for you to consider, maybe you have other ideas you'd like to share as well, but it will be really helpful to us to understand how you envision gathering that feedback because that will, again, drive some timeline considerations and also some resource considerations down the road.
I just want to add that I think community has some subsets that are really important, and one is parents and families.
Absolutely.
That, you know, we certainly have PTOs in our schools that can perhaps be helpful to us. And then, of course, we have business community and others. So I want to make sure that we don't just lump parents into community because they do have a very specific set of needs and suggestions, I'm sure. Thoughts from board members? The matrix is great. I just wanted to make sure we specifically call out families as part of it.
It's funny because I was trying to figure out the formatting, and I thought about parents, and I was like, but I can't have a fifth box. I couldn't think of a sixth one, so.
Trustee Cottrell?
Yeah, so I think like many of us, I've been thinking a lot about this over the last few weeks, and what I kept coming back to is a board-initiated ad hoc committee made up of parents, members of the association, the business community, put a committee together that will vet the applicants, give the board three names, and the board conduct an open interviews for the public to take part in, to watch, like an open board meeting. Because we have to involve everyone. And, I mean, each trustee represents the district. We could each appoint a parent that lives in our district. So we have people live all over our county so that they can truly have a say and a voice and involve the associations so that everyone can feel like they had a say in the process. And I know we've heard a lot from our business community about our relationship with them not being great, and that's an issue because we need our kids to go into our economy here. We need to have a good relationship there. So I kept coming back to an ad hoc committee so the board can rely on them, lean on them as a Washoe County community to give us who they think is the best out of the pool. How we get to that pool, that's, I'm torn on that, but, and then have the board then take those names, however it is, and then actually conduct interviews. Bring them here, bring them to Washoe if they're not from here, conduct interviews where the people can sit out here, watch it live, and then create some lag time between that and a decision so we can hear from people on what their thoughts were. The more we involve people, I think the better we're going to be. Can be a completely different idea, but again, the more people we involve in this decision, the better off we are going to be.
And certainly, that's absolutely true. I think everybody on this board wants to have a very broad-based input process. I think the notion of a search committee is what Emily had put up there, and I think that's a really wonderful idea. I do think that at this stage, which is developing the profile of the ideal candidate, we actually want to be more inclusive than just a search committee. You know, we would want to have a broad-based way to find information. But we also have to recognize that NRS requires us to have those interviews on the public record. So, and that does impact the interest of some candidates because we do have to interview those folks in public because this is an elected body. And if we have a search committee that is advisory to the board, it is an open meeting law committee. So just some of the considerations we want to make sure people are aware of. We certainly want to have things be open and transparent. Not everyone else likes that. Candidates often don't like that, and members of an ad hoc committee, a search committee, need to know that that would be the case as well. But I think the point, the part of the process we're in right now is just to give Emily, and I think that's great feedback, you know, from trustee Cottrell, the notion of a search committee that would, at the appropriate time, be the ones that vetted, recommended candidates to us. In this part of the process, which is soliciting the input about the profile of the ideal candidate, I don't have any disagreement with anything you've got on your matrix. So I think you've captured it, just as long as we make sure we have that fifth box for families.
Yes, absolutely. And I think you make two great points that I want to reiterate because they're important considerations, and I think you can leverage each of these things and maybe some other ideas, too, in different ways, right? So search committee definitely subject to open meeting law, which, again, kind of connects back to the timeline because now you have, you know, schedule, different scheduling considerations. And the second point just flew right out of my head. Open meeting law? Oh, and then the confidentiality of candidates, right? So if you use a search committee to vet candidates, that could potentially dissuade applicants from applying if they know they're going to be public before their finalists. So just something to think about as we, and I'm going to, like I said, glue all this together at the end so that you can see kind of the pros and cons for each of these buckets and each of the strategies that we might use to facilitate this process. So just things to think about.
Okay, I think trustee Calvert, did you, okay. Trustee Kelly?
Thank you, Madam President. I think something, too, that would be important is just to remind people that they can contact the Board of Trustees directly to let us know what desired qualifications and characteristics that they would like to see the superintendent. Email is certainly a good one. A lot of people, I think, are good at taking what their thoughts are and putting it into a nice email and sending it off to the board. So I just think, reemphasizing that, they can contact the board directly. If they don't want to take a survey or if they don't have the time to be on a committee or anything like that, they can contact us, and then we'll read what they have to say, and that'll be part of the process that we go through as we go through the process.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Trustee Minneto, did you have anything?
Nope.
Okay. Trustee Cottrell?
Thank you. Yeah, I got ahead of myself there. So that slide that we're on, my thought is to do something like the budget forums. I like surveys, but surveys sometimes they just don't get to everybody, and you're not, it's not proportional responses. Going all over our community and having forums similar to the budget forums that we had, I think would be very good. Because, and then also do one with staff, similar to the budget forums, and actually ask people to come out and almost the exact same format. Break up into small groups, you could do whatever you want, but just to actually get people and talk to them face to face. And a survey can supplement that, but I would be cautious on just doing surveys because I'm not quite sure that would capture exactly what we want. Community forums would be a great touch because then people know we've reached out, we're coming to you, we're coming to your communities, come out and tell us Come out and tell us what you think about this very important hire.
I think that's the focus group's idea, but I think the forum is a better descriptor of what, you know, we've got a great model for that, so that, let's make sure we use that.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else anybody wants to add on this? Have you got enough input at this point on...
I think so. The only question that I had was, is there anything that you don't think is appropriate, or that you're like, man, I'd rather not do it that way? Or are there any ideas that you have that aren't listed that maybe I didn't think of?
We might involve, in addition to the associations, we might, I'm just brainstorming here, think about how school sites could, as part of their professional learning communities, develop some, at the school level, have discussions about what are the ideal candidate's qualifications. And we could maybe, you know, provide some sort of template for the discussion and just have that BA staff meeting, you know, and provide that input to us.
Okay.
Okay, let's keep moving.
So, it sounds like the approach would be as many touchpoints as possible, so that we can get the broadest level of feedback possible. All right. So, when it comes to screening, interview, and selection, candidate profiles are something that you would probably see if you engaged a consultant in initiating the search process. And a candidate profile is basically going to be taking those folks who meet minimum qualifications and helping develop, the consultant works with them to help develop a profile of how Emily, the candidate for superintendent, meets the particular skills and experiences that we identified in that prior step that we're looking for, right? So, it kind of helps glue together, if you will, all the details in the person's, you know, professional background and their accomplishments and experiences, and says, this is how this person meets your qualifications. So, it's something that we usually see a little bit later on in the search process, when we get to the point where we're looking at finalists or, you know, the potential for interviews. Having a scoring mechanism in place, I think it's good for me to understand what your appetite is for that. There's often an inclination to want to have a scoring mechanism, to try and remove some of the subjectivity from the process. I think that whether or not you want one is going to influence the complexity of the total search, right? And also, we'll need to work hand-in-hand with that profile creation to say, okay, if this is what we're looking for, then what does that scoring mechanism look like? And does it have weights? And how, you know, how do we make sure that the score gets us to the right candidate? Or what role does the score play in the screening and selection process? Like I said, there's often an inclination to want to have a scoring mechanism, and then when it's really driving the process, then sometimes at the end, the hiring manager will say, like, wait, timeout, timeout, right? Like, this scoring mechanism pushed me to a particular candidate, when there's some subjective elements that need to be considered as a part of the hiring process. So, for me, it would be helpful to know, you know, kind of what outputs you're imagining as a part of this process, because I think, again, when we get a little bit later on to what resources we might use to facilitate the process, that will be helpful information to have.
Personally, I think a scoring framework that is not mathematically rigid is more desirable. You know, we've heard a lot from folks, at least I have had emails talking about, well, we don't want to have people that just came from a business background. We only, you know, want people that come from an educational background. And actually, we need, at least in my opinion, we need somebody who has both things to be a great superintendent, because, you know, we have to have that educational leadership to support our student achievement, and we're also running a $1 billion enterprise with 8,000 employees. So, there's, you know, it's a complicated set of skills. And for me, I'm interested in having a wider net and having the flexibility to not have a rigid scoring system that rules out some people that might have a different, you know, for example, if we said, well, it's, you know, 50% educational leadership and 50% being a great chief executive and being a great leader, but if somebody's a really great educational leader, but they're weaker on this side, you know, there's the, sort of as we're treating students as individuals, we need to be able to recognize the strengths of individual candidates. So, I think having a candidate profile is good, and having some sort of general scoring framework is good, but that it not be rigid mathematically, so that we rule out people who might be wonderful stars.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I would agree with that. To me, the scoring mechanism would eliminate those that are just not qualified to be in this position. It would kind of separate the serious candidates from the not-serious candidates. Once we have our serious candidates, then there should be some flexibility to take a look at the individual, because if the scoring system's too rigid, we could get halfway through and realize we're losing candidates we kind of like because of the rigid scoring system that we have. And then we have two choices, continue on or abort the whole thing and start over, and neither would be great in that situation. So, a mechanism that would clear out those that are not qualified or aren't serious candidates would probably be, what I would say, would be a good scoring mechanism.
Okay.
Trustee Kelly?
Thank you, Madam President. When I think of candidate profiles and I think of scoring, those are both things that really look at the experience and probably the education of the people that are applying. And to me, of course, that's extremely important. That might be probably the most important part. But I also would like to somehow see if there's a way that we can also look at the personality of people that are applying, because, you know, I would want someone that is comfortable getting in front of groups of people and talking about our strategic plan and talking to the community about what we're doing well and what we need to improve on, you know, gaining that support. And when you look at someone's resume, for instance, you might not necessarily be able to say, okay, looking at this resume, this is someone that's really great speaking in front of large groups of people. So, I don't know how you would do that, but I would like to see personality and the ability to do certain types of things built into the profiles and the scoring, just so that we don't lose that part, because I think that's important.
Okay.
Others? Yeah, I think the, one of the things that our district is really working hard on now is the culture of the organization. And those are sometimes the most difficult things to determine in a candidate. So, I think there is an interest in, you know, does this person collaborate? Are they, you know, are they good at relationship building? Are they good at public speaking and being the face of the district? Those kinds of things. And those are harder to tease out, but I know those are the things that really make or break the success for the district. Trustee Cottle?
So, basically, finding intangibles. Identifying the positive intangibles that we're looking for. How we do that is hard, but I think, I'm with them. Those, the positive intangibles that you might not, you know, read in a resume, I think that's really what this community is starving for right now. Someone that will lead, just be a good leader and lead us to the next step. Be able to communicate in front of crowds, be able to get in front of the media and communicate the vision of the district and get the community engaged and to follow this individual. Mistakes are going to happen, but, so, it's like getting those intangibles, and that's hard without getting them right in front of you, which obviously is not going to be feasible for the early stages of the process. But I agree, I mean, you guys hit it right on the head.
Okay, great. So, just in general terms, there's applicants, there's pre-screening of applicants, right? Because you're going to have some potentially that don't qualify at all. And then there's going to be kind of the filtering of the next stage, right? Which could involve some pre-screening interviews before we get to the finalist interview process. So, we know that in creating the profile for what we're looking for in candidates, which is the very front end, we want to have broad stakeholder involvement in that process. What are your thoughts about involvement of stakeholders in either the pre-screening or finalist interview process and what that might look like?
I love the idea of having some sort of a search committee that is broad-based, but there are some pros and cons. So, from my perspective, I don't think we're ready to talk about interview questions and that sort of thing. I think we do want to, whichever way we go with who manages the process for us, whether it's HR or a consultant, I think those are the kinds of things that we want either a consultant or HR to bring forward to us. I don't think we're prepared today to, you know, to talk about that yet. But I do want to support the notion of having a community meet and greet with finalists.
Okay.
I think it's really important for the staff to be able to meet the people who are the finalists and for the community. And again, there are candidates who don't want to do that when they're employed someplace else and it becomes public that they're, you know, a finalist for something here, because only one of those finalists is going to get the job. And so, anybody else who's a finalist, and it's a public process, their employer is going to know. You know, I've been on the receiving end of some of those before, and it's, it can be very difficult for a candidate. So, we need to think that through. But again, I feel really strongly that we owe that to the employees, to our students, to the community, to have, when we have final interviews, that we have an opportunity for people to meet each other.
Meet and greet, okay.
Yep. Trustee Minneto?
And I would totally agree with that.
Okay.
And maybe we can screen some people out at the very beginning if they're not willing to jeopardize themselves.
You never know. Go ahead, yep.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Personally, to me, involving the community through a search committee, through meet-and-greets, is going to be an expectation of the community. And if candidates are not willing to do that, then I'm just not sure they're going to be the best fit here, just because I don't, if we do anything that's not really open and not involving our community, it could be a poison pill for the whole process. I know we might have some people who don't want to go through that process, but just from my six months here and before that, talking to a lot of people, the community wants transparency, accountability, open dialogue from start to finish, and it starts with the leader. And if we're not willing to do that in the process, the community may not expect that this person, when they're here, is going to do it once they're hired, and here we go again. So, the meet-and-greets are great, that's pretty common. You've got to answer tough questions from community and from staff, and seeing them in that element, I think, is going to be great for us and for everyone involved to see how they handle that. And that will also build trust, and whoever is end up picked will start off on a good foot with stakeholders.
And I think timing has a lot to do with it, right? So, if you are putting in an application for a job, you probably don't want your employer to know at that point, but if we are further along in the process and you're a finalist, I think at this level, many people will expect it. So, we just have to be, I think, very thoughtful about what resources we're using for which steps in the process and when that makes that information publicly available. So...
Trustee Kelly?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, maybe one other thing, too, is that we want to make sure that we try to give every finalist, try to get them the exact same type of format. So, for instance, if we, if the finalists are doing a meet-and-greet, we want to make sure that all of the meet-and-greets are, for instance, at a school. We don't want to have two finalists doing a meet-and-greet at a school, and the third finalist doing their meet-and-greet at a, you know, business conference room. We want to try to keep it similar, because that way, we, as a Board, I mean, we'll be attending some of these, the meet-and-greets, and we'll be listening to see how the person reacts and how they do, and it'll help us if we can see them in very similar situations. And then it helps us to compare better.
You're talking to HR. My middle name is consistency in process, right?
Which is also a requirement, you know? Processes get challenged if they're not consistent, so...
That's right.
Yep.
That's right.
Okay.
And President Simon Hollins, I completely agree that we're not going to get into the weeds of interview questions. I think my point in asking this question was really to get a feel for the Board's appetite for involvement in that process, right? Is it, you want to have another workshop to create questions for the various stages? Or, you know, how you had kind of envisioned that work happening, I think is important.
Just personally, I want the experts in executive search to be giving us suggestions about those things. Certainly, we can react to them, but I don't think we're the best qualified people to, you know, develop those questions. I think there are important things that other people can suggest to us. I do think that, I think, just for me personally, the Board wants to be involved and engaged and fully informed about the process, but not micromanaging the process, because there, you know, there are seven of us, and we can't, any one of us be overly involved in the process, and we also can't slow the process down by having every single step of everything decided at the Board level. That's just my feeling. Just as we trust our staff to implement the direction that we give, I think, you know, it's important for us to give direction, but let others implement and check back with us. Trustee Kelly, and then Trustee Cottle?
I think on the interview questions, I don't mind if the types of questions that we ask, if that doesn't get developed until later on in the process. I mean, the questions that we might want to ask people in October could be very different than the ones that we decide we want to ask them in February or March, just depending on what might be happening in the district or in the state at the time. So, for, yeah, so for interview questions, I don't need to see those right away. Let's wait, maybe, as the process, let it develop more and more, and maybe we can look at questions later on.
Is your inclination the same as President Simon Hollins, that recommendations would be made for consideration versus you guys drafting questions?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Trustee Cottle?
Yeah, I would agree with that, too. But what I would also add is whoever is developing the questions, it's very important that they have an understanding of our community and of Washoe County and of the current culture we have in our school district, because that'll help formulate the questions. Because we really, when we get to the end of this, we want to be certain as best we can, that we have not just selected the best person, we've selected the best person for us, for us in Washoe County. And through the interview process, if someone's making the questions that has no idea about Washoe County, they've never been here, I'm not, you might get a good executive, but you're getting the best executive for us. And I don't want to get too far in the process before we start figuring out that, do we have a good person for Washoe County? So, having, being familiar with our community, I think, is very important for whoever is going to develop the questions for all the candidates.
Okay.
Trustee Minneto, did you have something?
I'm in full agreement of that.
Okay.
Trustee Kelly?
And then, in addition, I'm in agreement with that, too. In addition to our community, we should also really focus questions around our strategic plan, because our strategic plan, I mean, that was developed in a very public way, and it's the guiding document that our teachers and principals and our staff work with every day. So, in addition to having questions that really talk about, you know, us as a community, I think we also have to keep focusing on questions that kind of go around our strategic plan, because that's going to be really, there might be little tweaks, but whoever the person is that we choose is going to start with that strategic plan and start to move in that direction.
That's a great point. Not a lot of people realize that when they're interviewing, right? So, you want to be screening and interviewing the person against the tool that you're going to use to evaluate them and to judge their performance.
I do want to just add to that, that it's typical, and having hired CEOs, before it's typical for a CEO to lead a strategic planning process. And we have, we got to the point of starting one, but I think we wisely have said, let's push the pause button right now and not go through a process of developing a whole new strategic plan and getting someone here, because they may have, I mean, we may benefit from their ideas about new ways to achieve things. I agree that I don't think our strategic objectives change... I, I agree that I don't think our strategic objectives change that much. We still want, you know, student achievement, we still want a great staff that we retain, and we still want great family engagement and those things that are the big picture items. But, but I would, I wouldn't necessarily measure it against our existing strategic plan, but maybe those strategic goals that, you know, what would your ideas be for, you know, enhancing family engagement, for example? You know, those kinds of things.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's keep going.
All right. So here's where I tried to glue it all together, right? On the left, you have the items that we've talked about so far, timeline, stakeholder input, scope of search, et cetera. And then there's really four ways to look at this. And you could do kind of a one-size approach, right? Like a national firm could handle everything from start to finish. You could think about each of these elements and say, you know, we really think that we might be able to leverage a local consultant to handle pieces of this and then rely on district staff for other pieces. There's kind of pros and cons depending on what your appetite is for each of these stages. So I thought it was helpful to look at these options through those lenses. So timelines obviously are important for the reasons we talked about before, but of course, the timeline will have an impact on cost as it relates to either a national or a local consultant. A more aggressive timeline is probably going to be more expensive. It may also limit interest in the project, right? So if it's a very quick turnaround, some organizations that might be otherwise suited to help us with one or more components of the process might decline to do so if it, if the timeline doesn't fit their, their business. So that's certainly something to consider. It sounded like there was a general consensus that the start of the next school year made the most sense versus trying to really get this done very quickly. We talked about timeline for the district search committee. Obviously, there will be time involved in identifying the members of that committee and then scheduling considerations as it relates to open meeting law. And then, of course, timeline impacts the viability of exclusively using district staff to facilitate the process because a search of this nature with the elements that we've talked about is obviously very comprehensive and it's going to take a lot of dedicated resources. So that's certainly a consideration. Stakeholder input, I'll just kind of touch on, you know, national versus local. Local consultants has some local advantage in gathering stakeholder input. They might have some ideas about venues to use or groups to connect with that a national firm would not. On the other hand, a national firm that specializes exclusively in superintendent searches, right? There are those out there, is going to have resources and expertise in collecting and synthesizing data that a local consultant might not necessarily have, but then they would potentially lack that local expertise. District search committee is certainly an option when it comes to gathering stakeholder input. That's one way that you might consider leveraging them. And then in terms of district staff, obviously, there's going to be a lot of departments that would be involved in that process, much like the budget forums and some of the other community engagement events that we do. Scope of search, this really comes down to how much outreach they can do, right? So a national firm is going to have the broadest base of candidates to reach out to. Candidates who do want to kind of passively look might reach out to a national firm and say, hey, if, you know, opportunities meeting these criteria come available, perhaps consider me or let me know. A local consultant is probably not going to specialize in superintendent searches, given the nature of the way our school districts are structured.
Not necessarily.
They might.
I have, I have heard from one, so.
Yeah, so, that's right, we did have one local person. Their, their scope is going to depend on the resources that they have available, right? The capacity of their staff, the, the resources that their organization uses. I think it would be very difficult to have, for this particular stage, the district search committee actually conduct the search, right? They're not going to have access to the types of resume databases and things that you would otherwise need. District staff certainly available. Candidate screening, again, if we're looking national versus local, I think it's really going to come down to the expertise of the entity that, that we opt to go with. District search committee will require obviously some direction from the board and support from staff in order to help facilitate that process because it is, of course, very important that we have a defensible process. And then, you know, candidate screening, I think I have an amazing staff, I have some executive search experience. I will tell you, I've never done executive search for a superintendent, so this could be a fun new challenge. But I think it's, it's fair to disclose to you, we have a lot of expertise when it comes to screening teachers and administrators, but I don't have a big pool of expertise to tap into when it comes to screening for superintendents, so.
Before you move off this, oh, okay, so you're continuing, and I, for me, there's so many things that a search committee can't do because they would still require support from either staff or a consultant. For me, the, the decision comes down to doing an RFP for a consultant. And we can open up an RFP and if qualified people who are local apply, or if qualified people who are local nearby apply, that's great. For me, it's just, are we doing, are we going to do an in-house process or are we going to retain some outside expertise? It's really either or for me. And, and I'm, I'm going to be landing on the side of having some outside assistance to help us. It's also very difficult for the staff. Again, you all have a lot of other things to do, number one. It's not your area of expertise. And it's also very awkward for the staff to be recruiting and managing a selection process for their boss. So just want to, just want to share that, a strong feeling that I have that it puts the staff in a very difficult position not to have outside help for this. Any other thoughts? Well, yeah, Trustee Minneto? Yep.
I'm in agreement with that. I think we need to step outside. You guys have enough to do. We don't want to have you sleeping here.
Trustee Cottle?
Yeah, my only, my only concern is how much is this going to cost? I want to be sensitive to our, to our standing with our community. And I don't want to set up a new superintendent with, you know, they walk in the door and they've got, you know, an O and two count with two outs because the public is not accepting of how much money we spent on a process. I would like us to be local if we're going to do a consultant because I truly believe the local touch on our community will help identify the best person. I know that that limits us. We'll have to kind of see what our options are. I get nervous about a national firm because they don't necessarily care what we do in the end as long as they get paid. And that's a concern for me.
I do want to, I do want to debate that a little bit, and I think this is a decision that we should wait for all of the trustees on. But executive search at this level is, we have to get this right, and I think we all agree with that. And we, it's almost like we have two processes. One is to find the right person or firm to help us, help us to lead this process and manage it for us. And then the second is to find the right result, the resulting candidate. And we, we don't have a depth in our small community. We don't have a depth of resources of people who are networked to the superintendent candidates out there, even regionally in the Western United States, you know, is a, is an option. The folks who do this for a living know where to find the folks who are interested in making a move to a place like this. So, and, and we don't have a lot of that. We have one that I know of locally. I also want to comment on the, on the cost. We are currently foregoing having a deputy superintendent. We have two other positions that are being held open at the very highest levels of this organization. So we are down, I'm going to guess, by the time, if this takes a year to do, we would be down probably $350,000, $400,000 of savings in staffing costs that we're not going to be spending. So for me, it's important to not throw money away and not throw money at it, but wisely invest in making sure that every part of this process has the benefit of the best qualification. That's, you know, that's just my thought. But again, I think, I think we should wait for everybody before we make that decision. Other thoughts? Scott, Trustee Kelly?
Well, I know that when you do involve a national firm that has to continuously travel from somewhere else in the country to our community for different things, the cost can very quickly skyrocket. Like here, the cost estimate for a national firm is $45,000 plus. I would be totally fine with right around $45,000. But if we're calling that firm back to our community time and time again to do this or do that, that, that cost could be $90,000. And so I, I'm kind of shying away from a national firm only because I worry about, you know, first off, the cost, how quickly that can get out of hand. And also, a national firm tends to be working on multiple superintendent searches at the same time. And so if they, if they've got, you know, Washoe County search and they've got, you know, a big city search that's paying much more money, are they going to really have our best interest in hand? I think that, so I'm kind of shying away from a national firm, but, and I also think that local, we do have some really great people locally that could lead this. Whichever one we go with, whether we do a national firm or we do a local consultant, I would really hope that they would work very closely with a district search committee. I know it's one, it's one of the options, and what I'm saying here is that, that district search committee should, we should definitely have them involved, working with either a local consultant or with a national firm. Because I think that a district search committee of locals could be a really big help for a local consultant or with a national firm.
Good. And again, I guess I don't, I don't want to make a distinction that we're going either national or local. My, my view would be, we develop a good request for proposals and we see who responds and we may even give a preference to an in-state provider, that sort of thing. But I wouldn't want to say we're, you know, we're only doing a RFP to local consultants. I, you know, personally, again, I think that pool may be too narrow. And we've certainly, you know, we would need to define what does local mean anyway. But, but if we, if we do an RFP, we can address, you know, what is the budget they're proposing? And we can address what is their qualification and what's their availability to be able to give us the focus that we need. It's good, good points.
I think too, once you get the results of that RFP, there might be particular components of the process that you want to leverage the national firm for, but then utilize a local consultant for, right? So for example, stakeholder input. If, if we believe a local consultant can do that more effectively, but then the national firm has wider reach in terms of interested candidate pool, you might, you might decide to parse things out that way, right? So. Trustee Cottle?
And whichever way we decide to go, your office then would develop a contract with this firm and that the board would approve as far as the terms, the expectations, timeline. And so we would have at least a general idea of where we're going to stand with them.
Yeah. So we would work really closely with the purchasing team and go through the normal purchasing process to award a contract.
And that's the, you know, this, those are the kinds of things that the board, I would see coming back to the board. Here's the scope of work that we're proposing. Here's the detailed tasks and activities that, you know, that a consulting firm would propose. And then we can say, well, we don't like that, but we like this. And then they would respond to that scope of work. So, yeah, that would be a great partnership that HR and, and purchasing would do together.
Yep.
What if the search were to fail? I mean, is there, is there, is it common to have clauses in the contract that you're, you're paying for the service, but there's also a payment if there's a successful hire? Because like, you know, Trustee Kelly mentioned, what if the, a firm, we just, let's say, get a bad firm and they're just not giving us the service that we need? Things aren't timely and the search ends up being failed search? What kind of terms of the contract would be looking at? Or is it just we're out of luck and we have to pay them?
No. So Andrea is like the best negotiator ever, right? So she would, she would negotiate terms to address that, meaning if the search produced no results, right? What would that look like? And then in executive search, it's pretty standard practice for the firm to offer some sort of a guarantee. And so if, within a particular timeframe, either the, the hire leaves the district or is asked to leave the district, then they would redo the search at no cost other than usually actual costs, right? So like travel to facilitate the process, but no additional charge for the consultant's time that facilitates the search.
And that's a pretty standard provision for search firms.
Yeah. Yeah. And it's, I would say probably one to two years, depending on the firm.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Emily, you say that you don't have like a lot of experience as far as searches for this. So what would HR, how comfortable do they feel with dealing with each of these entities?
Each of the entities, meaning like a firm?
No, the national firm, the consultant and the district and the district staff. How?
So I feel very comfortable with each of these options, right? I think that really it comes down to what the board is looking for in each of these stages. I think that, that President Simon Holland did a good job of summing up my reluctance, and I think I have it on the next slide too, in that if you said, you know what, we really want district staff to facilitate it, just being candid, that probably means me. And that means that I'm probably not going to be doing a lot other than focusing on this to make sure we get where we need to go, right? But then just from a community perspective, a local consultant or a national firm or, or even a district search committee has a, kind of a third-party element and an objectivity, right? That, that people might not see district staff as having. And then, of course, it is a little strange to pick your boss.
Okay, let's keep going.
All right. So as it relates to interview and selection, you know, the national firm, local consultants are probably going to bring a lot of expertise in terms of conducting pre-screening interviews, developing those candidate profiles, making recommendations related to interview questions. I actually do feel really comfortable in that space. I actually teach a workshop on interview questions. But again, this is a different type of search. Happy to assist as a part of that process and obviously will be the liaison, no matter what route we go for each of these stages. The cost for a national firm is probably going to start at about $45,000. There are some of those guarantees that we talked about. There's going to be some resource costs. So typically, a firm is going to have their go-to sources that they use for advertising. And if we said, no, we really, really want to make sure that you are advertising via this channel, then we would incur a cost for that. So if we wanted them to, you know, run radio ads in large metro markets or something like that, that's not typically something they would do, and so we would incur a cost for that. So that's something to be mindful of. And then travel expenses. And in large part, those would come into play during the end of the process when we're bringing finalists here and the, the liaison for the firm would want to be a part of that process as well. A local consultant might have some travel expenses, depending on, again, how we define local. It's probably going to be around $20,000 to start for a local consultant. But when I, when I was looking at some prior information and some information from other school boards, that number is going to be largely dependent on which of these elements we have the local consultant facilitate. So if we, again, from start to finish, say, we want the whole package and everything you have to offer, then that price will probably look pretty similar to a national firm, just depending on the resource that, that submits a proposal. And then, you know, there might be an inclination to use district staff or search committee in an effort to reduce costs, right? And to manage public perception related to that expense. But there, there is, of course, a cost that can be quantified for having to dedicate my time or the different department resources that will be needed in order to help facilitate this too. So definitely something to be considered. I think just in the other column, I wanted to kind of sum up the things that we've talked about. I think a national firm brings, you know, expertise, the impartial third-party element, dedicated resources. I think it would be very reasonable for us to say that if we awarded the business to a national firm, that the recruiter or recruiters that they were utilizing to support our account was dedicated, right? For this level of search, that's a reasonable expectation. Firms are going to have recruiting technology. So like I said, some of the websites and advertising partnerships that, that other options might not have, service guarantees. Many search firms reached out to us after... Many search firms reached out to us after, you know, everything transpired, and many of them offered services like providing compensation data and helping to, helping their candidate negotiate a contract and that sort of thing. So those are elements to be considered. And then both a national and a local consultant, I think, will likely involve an RFP process. So they are professional services that we can procure by soliciting proposals versus doing a formal RFP. But I would leave that to you all in terms of, we wanted to solicit proposals and just have them sent in, or develop standard RFP criteria and go through the normal purchasing process. I mentioned before, a local consultant may be used to support one or more specific phases of the process. Again, they have that community connection, but also that impartial third-party element. District search committee is definitely going to require direction from the board and support from staff, and may not really be useful for certain elements. So we might still end up having to use district search committee with other resources to supplement. And then we've talked at length about district staff and what we can do to help support. So thoughts, questions?
Anything else? Trustee Kelly?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I haven't really thought about using a national firm for some parts and a local consultant for others. So my question is, is that common when it comes to these kinds of searches? Like, do national firm and a local consultant, do they tend to work well if we establish certain parameters? Or like, what have you seen using a combination like that with other searches?
So I think it's very community-dependent, right? So what are you trying to accomplish? And it sounds, based on the feedback that I've heard today, obviously, that engaging the community and engaging a broad base of stakeholders is really important, and definitely some question about whether or not a national firm can do that effectively. And so that's definitely something to be considered. I think we're really in the driver's seat as the customer. And so I think we could solicit proposals through an RFP process for start to finish, and then take the elements that we like, that we think would fit the best, and kind of customize our approach to it. Of course, pricing will probably vary a little bit if we do that, because firms and consultants tend to price things in sort of a packaged kind of way. So we might have to ask some more questions about, well, if we used you for these things but not for this particular element, how would that look? Having come from staffing and executive search, I'll tell you that most firms are going to be pretty flexible. And if, you know, if somebody came to me and they said, hey, we have one element of the process covered, but we want you to handle the rest, then I would make that work. So I think we'll experience something pretty similar from most firms.
And as we've seen with some of our previous contracts, for example, for our superintendent evaluation process, folks will collaborate. So, for example, if we say in a request for proposals that local expertise is critical to this process and local knowledge, a firm that is not based here in Washto County is going to find someone in Washto County to collaborate with, and they will jointly submit a proposal quite often. So that will often happen as well. But again, we could decide that we, you know, we want someone to help us with the search process who has maybe a bigger scope, but have the stakeholder input processed done by folks who don't necessarily have to be a search firm. So we could do those things differently.
And I think that was really kind of the takeaway from today, right? Was to get you thinking about those big buckets of things and what that might look like and what the preferences are, so that as we get a little bit further down the line and we're, you know, either looking at proposals or bringing recommendations, that you've kind of had some, at least baseline conversation about that. All right. So the optimist in me said, let's make some decisions. I made a slide for it.
Well, I think we have, you know, I think we've given, I think there's some consensus that we want to have a very inclusive process. We want to involve the community. We want to make sure that there's an opportunity for parents and for students and for staff, as well as community members, to have interactive dialogue with us, perhaps in a forum setting, as Commissioner, Commissioner Trustee Cottrell said. And that we probably need to come back on the who's going to manage the process. But I think there's a consensus, I guess that there's a consensus, that we don't want to just have the district staff responsible for this entire process. So I think we can cross that off as putting that on you and your team to have to lead this whole process alone. I think that's too much to ask, and I think we have pretty good consensus about that. Let's see, what else? We've talked about that we wouldn't only want to use surveys, but certainly surveys are a part of it, that are convenient for many people to be able to give us input. But we also want to make sure the associations are involved, and that perhaps we even have some, you know, parent-teacher organizations, school-based input, that sort of thing. So again, we want to be inclusive about that. We're not ready yet to do interview questions, but we would expect that that would be part of a scope of work that whoever assists us would develop for the board to review. And again, this gets tricky, because any decisions the board makes have to be made in a public meeting. And so when we put interview questions as a discussion in a public meeting, then those interview questions are known to any smart candidate who wants to watch our meeting and knows what the interview questions are. That may or may not be a bad thing. It's just things that we have to consider that are different, you know, in hiring processes at our level. And again, the reminder that a search committee is a great idea, an inclusive search committee. But again, it would have to be an open-meeting law committee if it's advisory to the board, and that means that all of its work of review of candidates and vetting, et cetera, has to be done in an open meeting. So just things to consider.
When we're to the point where Trustee Taylor and Trustee Raymond are here as well, I think the two decision points that really kind of get the ball rolling for us in terms of action are timeline, because that has to be included in the scope of work, and then an action around whether or not we want to do an RFP. And that really kind of kicks things off for us, so.
I heard some consensus around timeline, that we, that the outside end would be the academic year of 2021, and that we would, you know, we would certainly want to be able to make a decision in time to allow for people's contractual obligations. So somewhere, I'm thinking somewhere in the April to August timeframe would be our, you know, that would be our sweet spot for 2020.
Do we have to identify a start date with whoever's going to run this? Or is it just a general timeline?
Well, I think we would want to have a goal for when we want to have someone in place, so that we can back map all of the different stages of the process, because that will give anyone submitting a proposal an idea of whether or not they have the capacity to support the work in those timelines.
But a start date would be a negotiable item. We would set a goal.
It would be kind of a target for when we wanted to have someone in place.
Okay. And then I would just ask that we put this back on the August 13 agenda for discussion. And I think we do need to, when we have our other trustees here, I think it would be a good time for us to get more direction about an RFP. If we're agreed that we're not going to be using district staff, then we're going to have some sort of a proposal process. So let's begin having that conversation. Does that work for folks? Yep, okay. Okay, okay. Yeah, Lisa, let's go to public comment.
First up is Ann Silver.
Welcome, Ms. Silver. Thank you for staying and hearing all of this.
Thank you, no problem. Good evening, Madam President, trustees, and Chief Counsel, Rombardo. My name is Ann Silver, and I serve as CEO of the Reno Sparks Chamber of Commerce, representing 1,742 members who employ over 80,000 residents in our community. Our chamber cares deeply about the education of all students in order to meet the in-demand jobs our members must fill. The chamber appreciates having a voice in this search process, as our economic vitality, sustainability, and diversity depend on the graduates of our school district. For that reason, we choose to recommend a concurrent process with your local or national search for a new superintendent of schools. Given your appointment of an interim superintendent, the chamber proposes that you now contract with an experienced businessperson with the responsibility of conducting a thorough, top-to-bottom study of the district, its administrative procedures and policies, its budget, its operations, and its full complement of administrative personnel. We propose this person be on an independent contract, not to exceed 12 months, and that this individual should have no prior relationship with the district, its personnel, or its finances, nor should this individual have or had a child attending school in the district. The consultant should be tasked with preparing a comprehensive report for this board that explores all aspects of the district, including solution-based recommendations. This individual should also have the authority to advise you of any employee who hinders the full and complete preparation of an independent and final report. The chamber has not taken a position in regards to the termination of the former superintendent, but we have indicated that we wish the interim superintendent well as she navigates through this transition. But to move immediately to a search for a new superintendent would undermine the independent, unbiased, and thorough analysis into the prior and current challenges faced by the school district, as well as its opportunities. Any business that has experienced three CEOs over a few years, employee turbulence, adult misbehavior, and financial issues would immediately hire an independent consultant to provide objective, candid observations, insight, and recommendations. Given that the force, given 64,000 students in the district that are our greatest assets, shouldn't we look to someone to conduct an impartial and honest assessment of what has transpired over a decade and how best to chart a course for the future? This cost would be nominal when compared to the salaries paid to three former superintendents, the toll on this board, district teachers and parents, the financial burden of future litigation, and the impact on our entire community. Whatever decision you make today, we will support efforts to ensure all children in this district experience a robust, equitable, and positive school experience. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Silver.
Selena LaRue Hatch.
Welcome back, Ms. Hatch.
Thank you. So today, I'm here as a teacher, but also as a parent and a community member. And I had a big old fiery speech, which I'm now throwing out because I actually agree with most of what you said today. So I'm very heartened to hear that, especially Trustee Cottrell. I really appreciate that you wanted to be so inclusive. I loved your idea of a committee where teachers and staff and community members would choose finalists for a superintendent, because I do believe there has been broken trust. There has been a feeling, especially among staff, that we've been ignored for years. I mean, there have been climate surveys, there have been superintendent evaluations, where we've screamed and shouted from the rooftops that there's something wrong, and we felt that we weren't heard. And I think it is essential that they are included. I think that a district search committee is essential, after using a national firm, to find the very best candidates, so that we can use this large pool and then filter it through our community to make sure we have the very best people. And yes, that is open meeting, and yes, people may be upset about that. But I think that this district has had an era of secrecy and closed doors. And if somebody coming in doesn't feel comfortable with us going through their application publicly, then they probably shouldn't be the leader of our school district, because we need transparency and we need openness. So I applaud your efforts at opening this up, and I implore you to please include staff and community and parents as much as possible, not just in surveys, which are easily ignored, or budget forums where we feel like we're talking and no one listens, but actually in the decision-making processes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Zisk.
Welcome, Mr. Zisk. Nice to meet you, that we've met over email.
Yes. I came here to encourage you guys to take your time, because a lot of the past decisions of the school board, it seemed like they were shoot-from-the-hip decisions. But obviously, you've got that message. So take your time and make sure you do it right, and don't hurry things up, because the shoot-from-the-hip decisions, like the snow days and the digi-days and all that stuff, kind of costs a lot of money in the long run. The other thing I want to bring up was candidates, and you've already touched on a lot, is the key thing is leadership, leadership, leadership. We all know that, because this is, like you said, this is a big CEO job. So when we get down to figuring out the needs, it's leadership, leadership, leadership. And what you said about having local knowledge of these people in this community is really, really important. I disagree somewhat with your national firm, Chase, because like he said, if you come in April and you say, we paid $100,000 to find this person, the community will not be happy, because that's something there. One thing I didn't hear mentioned in all the presentations today, all the discussions, was data. Someone's got to come with a record of accomplishment that shows in data. You could talk to everybody, and they sound like the best person in the world, but they got to have the data. Same data you guys look at for your accomplishments and where you're at in records, they got to bring it and show it, and it's got to be trusted. So, you know, you can't just take someone's word. Reno has changed. The gentleman was here earlier. Reno's new town, he said new town, old town. Reno was a casino town, and now we're becoming a data town and a technology town, but our population is still mostly a casino town. So that has to be taken into consideration, too, because it's hard teaching casino parent students to become technology kids. So someone who's going to lead this has to understand that, too, that we're in a 10-year transition. I came here as a grandparent with two kids, class of 2030, 2031, and now, after all I've heard, I don't even know if you're going to find a candidate by then. So best wishes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zisk. And just for the record, I don't want to spend $100,000 either, and I don't think we will. Mr. Rose, welcome.
Mostly, I've got questions. Is there no career path for this position in the Washto County School District?
There is, and hopefully, there will be internal candidates.
Because it seems to me, I don't know where the person who is acting superintendent is came from right now. Is she from the district?
She is. 26 years she's been in the district.
And what's wrong with her?
I don't think that that subject is on the agenda. There's nothing wrong with her. We appointed her as the interim superintendent.
Yeah, so somewhere in this district, we've got the right people to do the job. And if there's no career path, and what I've heard so far, sitting here today, is we don't know what we're looking for. Nobody here, she's come out and said that we need to decide what we're looking for, and we don't know what we're looking for. We're starting from nothing. We don't know what we're looking for, and how can we ever get who we want?
If you want us to respond, I think each of us has many things that we're aware of that we're looking for, and we want to...
But it's not anywhere, it's not anything already here. You should have had that a long time ago. It should have been something that's on the school board all the time. We should know what we want.
I'll let you have your time. I'm sorry, I'm interrupting.
But it just seems to me, we don't know what we want. Everybody's got their own idea, but there's no standards set down that you ever put down. Maybe I was in the service too long. We always knew what we were looking for. It just doesn't seem that anybody is in charge. You're supposed to be in charge, but I mean, I'm not saying you're not, but it doesn't seem like anybody's in charge.
Well, I think what we're doing today, we do actually have a very, very intensive superintendent evaluation process that lays out both the expectations of the superintendent, the leadership qualities in decision-making. So we have that, that's already been codified and approved by this board in public meetings. But I think what all of us are interested in doing is hearing from the community. What else do people want to make sure? Because if there are things that have not been done appropriately, we want to make sure that we don't make those mistakes again. This is a new board, and none of these people hired the last superintendents.
I've spent a lot of time on the East Coast, and I'm from the West Coast, but I've spent probably half my life on the East Coast. They don't know who we are. They don't know anything about the West Coast. So if we're looking back for a superintendent back there, they're not going to know what we want. That's all I've got to say about it.
Thank you, thank you. Well, I do want to reassure you that we do have very rigorous criteria for our existing system, but we want to make sure that we hear from other people, too.
Mary Alber.
Welcome, Ms. Alber.
Thank you. President and trustees, I know the two that aren't here, and Scott, but I haven't met the others, and I want to introduce myself as Mary Alber. I, with Education Innovation Collaborative, founded it in the last year with the intention to support the district and the state education system to become the best in the country and the world. So we want the goal here to be a high bar. And what I see you doing with this process, I'm very pleased with, because I've witnessed three different... three different superintendent transitions and tried to be a community member, a parent and a community member, who was helping the process. And I witnessed some things that have been expressed here today, that it did not reflect necessarily what the community wanted, and it didn't also reflect what was the potential of Washoe County. And that's what I wanted to share today. In the letter that I sent late last night, or this morning, I expressed the excitement I feel with this opportunity that you have in front of you, to hire a superintendent for a district that has a lot of pockets of good things happening, excellence here and there. And I made a litany list of those good things that are happening. What could happen on top of all that is the pulling together of, as President Holland said, a strategic reassessment, and also what Ann Silver pointed out. Let's take a step back and look at where we are as a district. What should we leverage going forward? And what could we be if we were the best possible district in the country? And why I think that's important is that when we go out and search somebody from this country, maybe even outside this country, that person, we want to be able to ask the questions and a job description that sets the stage for them to bring innovation, excellence of change management, because if nothing else in education, we are lagging what the community and the employers, as Ann said, need for our kids to be able to do. And if we choose the right person who has the experience and the capacity, as Mr. Kelly said, to bring a collaborative input from the entire community, everyone feels like they've had their voice. And that new leader is at the helm of defining what that exciting new future is for Washoe County. I would love to be a part of that process, and I hope I can be on the selection committee. So thank you very much for your time and your efforts on this.
Thank you, Mary.
Todd Bailey.
Mr. Bailey.
Thank you very much. I pretty much agree with everything that's been said here today, except on the topic of consultants and national firms. I did not hear a consensus on that. I heard a drive for consensus on that, and can find really no legitimate reason for the Washoe County School Board to spend any taxpayer money on a national superintendent's search, especially when board members talk a lot about financial structural deficits that taxpayers need to fix with higher taxes. What's bigger than the internet? I mean, is there anyone that doubts if we're going to take a whole year or nine months to search for someone, that we can't post this on the internet and get the best candidates? We live in a pretty technological age, and I just have a hard time believing that a national firm with all these great connections is going to do better than a one-to-one connection with a superintendent somewhere who sees a Twitter post and goes to the website and sees that we're looking for somebody. That's the best way to find somebody, not some professional. Further, Nevada Accountability has reason to believe that the previous two national searches were orchestrated to achieve the selection of a preferred candidate. That's in violation of Nevada law. Other applicants may have a claim. Unfortunately, this orchestrated selection process led to terrible superintendents. We had one guy who had a great personality. He got us all enthused about the projects he wanted to do with the school district, and then literally walked off the job. He dropped out of the school district when the job wasn't even half-done. He essentially left. The next orchestrated selection had no previous experience. He even pretended to be a certified public accountant. However, under Nevada law, he was only a bookkeeper. So three national superintendent searches have given us terrible superintendents. They don't work. The Washoe County School Board should use the Personnel Department of Washoe County School District to conduct this search as described in Washoe County School District Policy 4110. That's how we hire people. I hear the reluctance of the Personnel Department here, but they're not selecting the next superintendent. You are. They're just helping you do that. So they're not hiring their next boss. They're just the filter of the applications that you approve. We want full transparency in this hiring process. See every applicant's resume so the entire community can participate in the process instead of orchestrating one. Does anyone really know how much these searches cost? Well, we hope to find out. We've got another public information request here. We want to know exactly how much money has been spent since 2009 on national superintendent searches by Washoe County School District. That includes everything, fees, travel, food, everything. Of the vendors who provide those services, are there any previous employment or contractual arrangements with the district? And are there any informal relationships with staff or board members? These are important questions in this, and I hope we get some good answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
And Malia Pukta.
Ms. Pukta, thank you all for staying so late. We appreciate it.
That's okay. That's all right. That's okay. So I've got a couple notes here. I'm going to try and do my best to interpret my thoughts. As has already been stated, there are a lot of issues revolving around trust from the community in the board. I heard a lot of really great ideas here tonight, and I really hope that those come to fruition. I like your timeline of trying to get somebody hired by like April, May, so that they can have the summer to work with the district. I think that's really good. The meet and greets were great. One of the things I think, Trustee Kelly, that you brought up was getting to know the personality. So I'm wondering if maybe at some point in the selection process, is a video interview appropriate? So you can kind of get a little bit of a feel as to whether or not that person might work. I really want to applaud you on going outside of the last selection process, trying something different. I know, President Holland, you said none of you were on the board at that time. You were not part of that selection process. So I really like that we're going away from just hiring the next person in line. I really like the idea of getting as much community involvement as you possibly can the board selection. You mentioned the PTO involvement. Probably no surprise. I'm a board member of my school's PTO, so I would be happy to facilitate, work with our administration, to try and get something set up at our site to get as much community input as possible. As far as the selection committee, again, I volunteer. So whenever that comes time for that, I will email Trustee Cottrell and Trustee Calvert, whose district I am in with that. So I just want to, again, just really commend you. I know that the cost is an issue. We don't have a money tree out in the back of the property that we can just go and pull from, so we have to be mindful of how much a search is going to cost. But I think that with the stakes that we're looking at, it's appropriate to hire somebody whose job it is to recruit, whose job it is to look at what we need. And I think that there's a very clear picture of what we need, and I think that the community has a very clear picture of what they want and what they expect. I think that they need the opportunity to voice that. But I really think that it is appropriate to do some sort of a hybrid, you know, local for certain aspects, national, to get that big, deep candidate pool that we need to be able to look at, and then a selection committee of community members, teachers, the people who are most affected by this choice. So thank you.
Thank you.
Margaret Martini.
Ms. Martini, thank you as well for your patience and staying through this.
It's a process. Speaking of process, and let's talk money in this process. I don't think $100,000 is going to be, probably not, how do I want to put it nicely? Anyway, $100,000 is peanuts, okay, to this district? It is. You guys get millions, now you're taxing more, and you're getting more and more money in. So let's look at, how much did it cost when Heath walked away? Then, let's talk Pedro. That was a lot of money that we had to put out through the school district. And now, how much is it going to cost to get rid of our current, well, our ex-supernintendent? You know, it's all in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So to spend $100,000 and get the right person is most likely the way to go. Don't chintz out on this, because it's very costly in the long run when the people leave or when you have to buy them out. So I think that you need to look at spending money wisely, almost no matter how much it costs, because the result of not choosing wisely and giving in to people's demands and et cetera, et cetera, you are in charge. They want to work here. You don't have to give them all the concessions that you did the last time. You know, there's probably plenty of people that want this position at the salary you're offering. And I think that you need to be in the driver's seat here, not the candidates. So think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martini.
And John Appolito.
My name is John Appolito. I wanted to thank Ms. Silver for her comments. That was probably some of the best stuff I heard today, figure out exactly what the problems are. I heard some good things from this side of the table also, and I would argue, there's a lot of people that think we struck out three times in a row with people from out of town. Let's see, Chicago, Chicago, Las Vegas. We're 0-for-3. The first guy from Chicago, he may have been good enough, but he was only here for five minutes. I don't even know how good he was, because I think when he left here, he didn't keep the job for even a year. So I don't know why we keep spending all this money and energy and effort to look for someone, our savior, to come in. I see a lot of great people right here. You see area superintendents, interim superintendents, chiefs, there's about eight or 10 chiefs out on that board. You mean to tell me there's nobody in this building that could be superintendent and do a better job than the last three we've had? I find that hard to believe. I could step into it and probably do just as good a job as the last three, maybe not Heath, but I don't know. It just, it seems like a lot of blah, blah, blah for nothing. Look at what we have. That's probably the answer, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito.
And that's all I have.
Okay. So let's bring it back to the board. Counsel reminded me that even if we articulate a consensus, we still need to vote on it. So I think, would someone like to make a motion for the timeline goal of when we would like to have this person in place? That would be welcome. Trustee Kelly.
I move that the Board of Trustees have hired a superintendent prior to the start of the 2020, 2021 school year.
Okay. Second by Trustee Cottrell, that that would be our goal. Okay. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. As I said, I'm uncomfortable talking further about the scope or the consulting option without other trustees here, so I think we'll wait on that one and we'll bring that back. I don't know that we need a motion to say that we want to have a very inclusive stakeholder process. I think that's the direction that Emily has heard, and we'll work on that as we go. Is there anything else that board members feel that we're prepared to take action on tonight? Okay, well, let's make sure then we come back in August with the continuation of this and that we'll refine it at our August 13 meeting, and anybody who's not here is going to snooze, they lose.
So just from a planning perspective, I think what I'll work on is mapping out, based on that timeline, the activities, right? And so just kind of some general guidelines around, you know, stakeholder input might happen during this time, and just to give an idea of how quickly we need to act in terms in order to meet that goal. And then we can have that discussion with the larger group regarding scope and everything.
Great idea. Give us a sort of a big chunks Gantt chart, sort of, that these things will be going on. Okay, great. Okay, well, I think we have enough now for that discussion item, so thank you. And we need to move on then to item 3.7, which is discussion possible action to provide direction to determine the compensation to be paid to Dr. Kristin McNeil for the performance of work as acting and interim superintendent. And I do want to let folks know that being the interim superintendent is a huge job. It is not the same as adding a few meetings to the deputy superintendent's job. I think the job has changed significantly for her. She's on the phone with me often, early hours of the morning, and she's often working late at night. And we have held the deputy superintendent position open, so we are, you know, Kristin is doing two jobs at the moment, so we appreciate that. So Emily, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. This one's me as well. Per Board Policy 9082, continuity of district daily operations and succession planning for the superintendent, compensation is allowed for an employee who temporarily fills the role of superintendent of schools. Per that policy, during the period that an employee is acting superintendent, that compensation may be up to 10% of the daily rate of pay. And during the period that an employee is interim superintendent, the compensations shall be set as part of a formal action by the Board of Trustees. In the board report, I provided some, let me back up. That policy also says HR will provide you information on compensation and help make recommendations. So in trying to figure out what information will be valuable to provide, I did go back and thankfully, we have not had interim superintendent situation often. I was able to get some historical data. It may be valuable in consideration, but obviously some significant time has passed between each of these instances, too, so it's hard to compare apples to apples when you also consider things like inflation. But in our most recent history, Dr. McNeil did serve as interim superintendent for one month in 2012. Former Superintendent Davis served as interim superintendent for about nine months in 2014, 15 timeframe. And during both of those periods of time, the interim compensation was determined to be $3,000 per month on top of the current annual salary. So as I included in my board report, Dr. McNeil has declined to accept compensation for the period in which she was acting superintendent before the action was taken to make her interim superintendent. And while I was able to provide some context, that $3,000 is generally the amount of additional compensation that has been provided. In speaking with Dr. McNeil about the recommendation that I would make to you today, she's obviously very aware of and sensitive to the constraints that we face from a budget perspective and the reductions that have been made district-wide. And so the recommendation that I'm going to be making today with her consideration and her agreement is $2,500 per month for the period that she's interim superintendent, as opposed to the $3,000 that has been paid in the past.
Okay. Discussion by board members. I certainly feel that it's a very legitimate and reasonable request. I appreciate Dr. McNeil's offer to forego compensation for the acting period. And I know we're all in the process of meeting with her individually and getting an appreciation for all of the issues that are on her plate right now. So I'd welcome comments from board members or a motion if anyone is inclined. Trustee Cottrell.
Yeah. Thank you for that concession. I think $2,500 a month is definitely a fair compensation, especially with being our superintendent right now, and also not filling other high-level positions. So someone, a lot of times you, are picking up the tasks of those positions or what would be covered by the individuals if those positions were filled. So... So I thought 3,000 was fair. If you'd like to concede a 2,500, I think that's absolutely more than fair.
Other comments? If not, we can entertain a motion. Oh, trustee Manetto?
I think 2,500 is real fair, but I'm kind of partial to 3,000 for her.
Well, does someone want to make a motion? And trustee Kelly?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the Board of Trustees provide interim superintendent Kristin McNeil monthly compensation on top of her current salary of 2,500.
Okay, sir, a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Calvert. And she did also reflect that she did not ask for any other increases in any of her other compensation. So any further discussion, a motion for 2,500? Okay. Is there any public comment on that?
Yes, ma'am. Todd Bailey?
We're submitting a public information request for the most recent copy between the superintendent Tracy Davis and the Washoe County School District. We got to start talking about salary inequities and take it seriously. Teacher salaries to compare and also to the $12-hour employee that's out in the community that's supporting all this. Student debt is real, and salary inequities at all levels of education contribute to the I think we also need to review the shutdown of the Washoe County School District Administration Building on June 27th and 28th. Public information request for that seeks the disclosure of all reports, emails, or any other documentation that can substantiate the safety concerns that the administration had on those days. It should be considered as a request for discovery information. It could potentially be in a legal case sometime in the future. But really, which law enforcement agency expressed safety concerns and what exactly were they? I haven't seen anything like that. You know, parents have actually been arrested right outside this front door while the board conducted business as usual. And was the safety threat from that parent or Ms. Davis any more substantial? I don't know. The entire event really should be referred to the District Safety Committee so they can review and develop the policy recommendations when such safety concerns arise from departing administrators. And they should also make some sort of determination if this was a safety issue or a public relations one. You know, initially, I was going to urge delay in any of these salary adjustments, but after hearing the information and the responsibilities that the interim superintendent will have, I think I'm in agreement with some of the trustees, maybe it needs to be more like 3,000. So, thank you.
And that's all I have.
We have a motion and a second. Losing mic. There we go. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Well, let's take a vote on that motion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Thank you, Dr. McNeil, again, for your, your compassion, your generosity, and your recognition of the difficult times. Okay. We will now go on to 3.08. Presentation, discussion, possible action to direct the school naming committee to consider the names of future high school at Wild Creek and the future career and technical education campus at the existing Proctor Hug High School together as one naming recommendation. Mr. Riley Sutton and Ms. Irene Payne.
Good evening. President Simon Holland, trustees, interim superintendent Dr. McNeil. For the record, Irene Payne, Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer, and I'm joined this evening by...
Riley Sutton, I'm here tonight as the liaison to the school naming committee, staff liaison.
And usually when Riley and I are here before you, we're talking about schools and new schools and naming of new schools. And as you probably know, we have two incredibly exciting, large, and impactful new schools coming down the road, namely the school at the Wild Creek location and the new school at the Hug Campus. And I'm immediately going to hand over to Riley, who's going to talk you through a proposal that we'd like to share with you this evening.
Thank you, Irene, and members of the board, interim superintendent McNeil. Riley Sutton, for the record, with this naming process, it's going to be a little bit different. This is different than something we've had to do before because we're moving students from one school into a whole new building and then doing something else with the building that's standing that obviously has a current name that people feel different ways about, but many of them strongly, from what we've seen in some public comments. Though board policy does not preclude the school naming committee from considering the two names together as one, the future name of the Career and Technical Academy at Hug's existing campus, and the future high school that is taking over the Hug Zone at Wild Creek. My sense from the school naming committee is that since it is not specifically spelled out in the board policy, that they can consider the two names together, that they would be a bit shy of doing something that is not specifically authorized. It is also much easier in a lot of ways to consider the two names together, because then you don't have an awkward situation of if you were to consider the name of the school at Wild Creek first, then you could not name that campus after Proctor Hug because there's an existing facility currently bearing that name. So first, you would have to rename Hug's campus if you did want that name to move. Then you would be in an awkward limbo where you've renamed Hug, but there's no building that bears the Hug name unless and until you were to move it to Wild Creek. So we didn't want to make any decisions that would in and of themselves finalize the name itself. And again, it seems like something that should be considered holistically as the student body and the zone moves. So that is what we were hoping to have board direction for, for the committee, to have that comfort that that is the direction you want to go, for them to specifically look at the names together as one. And I think that will also give the community a better sense of how this is going to go and not have so many potential for questions and rumors and things like that. So with that, we'd certainly welcome any questions.
Questions? Discussion seems wise to me. Trustee Manetto?
I'm sorry, maybe I took a nap there. Explain to me the two names together again. I'm sorry.
So Hug High School's current student body is anticipated to go 100% over to the new campus. So there, there have been comments made to the school naming committee that the new campus should bear the name of Hug, since it will be the school, the student body zoned for the area that currently is served by Hug High School. There have been other comments that say, keep the name Hug at the existing campus. We could not move the name Hug over to Wild Creek without first removing that name from the Hug campus, unless we were to consider the two names together as one item. So what would happen then would be the, we would go out with a naming survey that would ask people in one survey, what should happen with the name of the new campus at Wild Creek and what should happen with the new name at Hug? Or should it retain the same name? And that way, the school naming committee could provide recommendations to the school board of, we think the name of the campus at Wild Creek should be X and the name of the future career and technical academy at Hug should be Y, or the reverse of that, or something completely different, so that it can be considered as that, the fact that they affect each other so dramatically. Did I answer your question?
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion. And the motion would be to direct the school naming committee to consider the names of the future high school at Wild Creek and the future career and technical education campus at the existing Proctor Hug High School together as one set of naming recommendations.
So moved.
Thank you, trustee Kelly. Second by trustee Cottrell. Further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for waiting late. This is the consequence of our moving to 4 o'clock, but it's okay. It's a good thing. Board reports. I would like to just say to everyone who has given our family so much support during the past months of my, our daughter's brain cancer, I just want to thank you all for the love and encouragement that we all felt and she certainly felt. And just thank you for being such caring and compassionate people. So I appreciate that very much. Other board reports? Yes, trustee Cottrell?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to join some of you at the VIP tour of the new schools. And it's, it's pretty awesome what's, what's going to be happening in those three spaces this year and for many years to come. And I know staff and students are excited to get in there, and I think we're all excited to see the schools populated with students and staff and to see what's going to happen in there. So we're excited for this year.
Yeah, and great job by the staff on putting that together. And we appreciate the many folks from the community, elected officials, senators, et cetera, who came. It was wonderful. Other reports? Okay, I think it's probably late enough. Interim superintendent report?
Thank you very much, President Simon Holland. So just very quickly, I just wanted to remind our staff, we've set up some additional staff meetings where people can just come out and have a casual conversation with myself. Our next one is July 24th, tomorrow, at Sparks High School in the theater. That's from 10:00 to 11:00. We have the next one, July 25th, from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. And our last one is Friday at the Matley Building from 2:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. And that's really for Washoe County School District staff just to come and, and talk with me and find out what's going on. And then also, I just want to do a shout out for our expo on August 10th, which is a huge event for us at the Meadowwood Mall from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m. It's a huge undertaking for our communications staff, our operations staff, our academic staff. We will all be there with bells on, welcoming our families. And then also, if you have not registered your student, please get your kids registered. School starts August 12th.
All right. Thank you. Okay, any future agenda item requests? Trustee Cottrell?
Yeah, I have, I have two that I would like to present. They're mainly in response to some of the issues we've had recently. First agenda item, I would like a comprehensive review of the board action taken on February 14th, 2006, to place the authority of the day-to-day operation of the district in the hands of the superintendent, specifically reversing that action when it comes to the responsibility of approving separation decisions and the hiring of any staff in a district positions that earn over $100,000 per year, as well as district-wide decisions that impact everyone, such as digital days. Agenda item number two is the changing the direct reporting line of the chief general counsel from the superintendent to the Board of Trustees.
Okay. We'll put those on the agenda. Any other future agenda item requests? Yes, trustee Manetto?
I would like to have perhaps a presentation of our, the whole, what John Appolito keeps talking about. I see what he says, but what's our data? So I would kind of, how do I say that? About the kids using outside...
Ed tech vendors.
Thank you, ed tech vendors, that, that, and why we are doing that with, what's the evidence that we need to be doing that? How's that?
Okay. All right. Okay, any others? Okay, final public comment. Mr. Bailey?
Thank you. Based on the information...
Oops, his mic isn't on, Lisa.
Start the clock over, please. Based on the information contained in an article in the Reno Gazette-Journal on July 5th, 2019, Nevada Accountability is submitting a public information request to obtain copies of all contracts and invoices between the Washoe County School District and the advertising agency KPS3 or any of its principals since January 2017. According to the RGJ, these invoices exceeded $8,000. All of the information surrounding the termination of superintendent Tracy Davis, of all the information, this was the most surprising. As Washoe County School District already has a professional communications department at a cost of over $1 million a year, last time I checked, and the board has full access to these professionals. And this is a little prickly, so I will try and do it sensitively. Interestingly, KPS3 was involved in campaign fundraising for two different sitting Washoe County board members, the distinguished Katie Simon Holland and the distinguished Angela Taylor. Both campaigns raised a substantial amount of money through an event held by KPS3. Now, even more interesting, board member Angela Taylor took a campaign contribution from superintendent Tracy Davis in the amount of $99. Now, that's an interesting number, because normally, if you do $99 or less, you don't have to disclose the name, but she did do that to her credit. Having taken campaign contributions from superintendent Tracy Davis, shouldn't trustee Angela Taylor have recused herself from voting on that termination? I think we need an opinion from the legal department and our chief counsel, Mr. Rimbardo, on that. Can a trustee make contributions to, or get contributions from the superintendent and then make decisions about their employment? Is that legal or ethical? Is it a conflict of interest? You know, we're asking the legal department to do this investigation because think about it. What if a superintendent donated the maximum, $10,000, to four candidates on this board or potential on this board? The superintendent would have a majority right there. So I think this needs to be referred to the policy committee. I think we need to have a discussion about this and maybe develop a policy. Because I don't think we should, and I don't know where the money came from for KPS3. Like, is that a slush fund out there that the board has? Is that in the budget somewhere? I just think there's a lot of questions to be answered about that, and so let's start that process now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. I'd be happy to answer all your questions via email. We don't do a discussion during public comment.
And Natha Anderson?
Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. Natha Anderson, president of the Washoe Education Association. I was not going to speak.
Your microphone isn't on again, Lisa. We'll set you back up.
Really? It's okay. I've known Lisa since I was like, what, maybe like five? It's okay. I'll figure out a way to get back at her. Anyway, Natha Anderson, Washoe Education Association. It's, it's okay, I'm not going to take the full three. I was surprised that I didn't hear something in the interim superintendent's report, so I wanted to make sure that this was brought forward as well to this Board of Trustees. We've now had a chance, an opportunity to meet twice as all the union presidents, and it has been a great discussion. I believe she's mentioned it in some of her weekly emails, but I also wanted to bring that forward, make sure that that was also on the record for our trustee meetings, because it shows that, again, one of the biggest problems that has been brought forward to this body has been the employee morale. And she is listening to those of us that have been elected to be those spokespeople. And I really appreciate that on a personal level, but then also on a professional level, that it's very clear that she understands what it's like to be an educator, whether that educator is as a teacher or as a bus driver. And, and so I just wanted to bring that forward, is that one thing that interim superintendent McNeil has brought up more than a few times is that we have many employees that are teachers, but we have just as many employees that are not teachers and that are also important. And I, I know that's odd for the teacher president to be bringing that up, but the counselors are just as important as the administrators, which are just as important as our custodians, which are just as important as our architects, or three of them, and just as important as our school police officers and our substitutes. And so when we're speaking of the employees, it's not just the teachers, it's all of us. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear as well. I know that that was not needed at this late hour, but I really appreciate that. Thank you.
That's great. It's never too late to say thank you. She cut me off too, Natha, just so you know. She keeps shutting my microphone off. Any other public comment? If not, our next meeting of the board policy committee will be August 6th, and then our next regular meeting will be August 13th at 4:00 p.m. And of course, school starts on August 12th. So good luck to our students coming back, our teachers coming back, our bus drivers, our nutrition services staff, our school secretaries. It's crunch time. So thank you, everybody, for being here, and thank you, staff, for staying late. everybody for being here, and thank you staff for staying late, because this is a late one for you. So we appreciate that. And with that, we are adjourned.